Good evening. Thank you all for being here. It's 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings, presiding. Also present are Commissioners Moes Dunkle, Amelia Boyd, Grant Simmons, Wayne Benner, Ivan Remar, and Scott Torpey. And we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, with liberty and peace.
I'll make a quick announcement that there are listening devices available in the room. If anybody thinks that they would benefit from that, you can let city staff know and they will get those to you. Are there any general announcements from any Commissioners this evening? Any general announcements from city staff? Looking like not. Okay. Well, our first item is going to be approval of the minutes from our May 21st meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Then we can move on. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing and a request by Bitterroot Plumbing for approval of a conditional use permit for a contractor's yard at 1201 Baldi Mountain Road. Notice a public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on May 28th, 2024. The order and procedure for this public hearing this evening will be as follows: Explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Presentation by the applicant. Please note that Commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at this time. In the opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony, questions should be asked of those testifying at this time. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows: in favor, then neutral, and then opposed. Then the applicant can rebuttal. We'll have rebuttal testimony, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during the rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. And then we'll close the public hearing and the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed and questions directed only to city staff during the deliberation. Before we proceed any further, I would like to ask for confirmation from each Commissioner that you have had no ex parte contact and have had no conflict of interest as pertains to this request.
No, I have not. None. None.
None here?
No.
None here? None.
Excellent. We may proceed. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Darren Fluke for an introduction of this request and explanation of the application.
Chairman, very much. I'm Darren Fluke, your interim city planner, and I'll be presenting this application this evening, in addition to the application following this. We thought we'd do a little warm-up application for you this evening, and so this one hopefully won't tax you too hard as we go through. As you noted, this is an application for a yard. The property is located where you see the dot there on the south side of Baldi Mountain Road. That's just a couple hundred feet east of Division Street on the south side of Baldi. The applicant specifically is requesting permission for a 2,120 square foot shop, which will include an office. I believe they have five parking places and they'll have some fenced outdoor storage as well. The property is located in the IBP Zone, Industrial Business Park, and this contractor shop is listed as a conditional use within the zone. This is what the site plan looks like as submitted by the applicant. You see Baldi Mountain Road on the bottom of the drawing. They'll have a single drive approach to their parking area and then the shop and office area and a small yard there to the left on that image. So it is a very just simple, straightforward application. So with regard to the required conditional use, findings of fact, you'll see a lot of words here. There are probably more than all used to describe the entire application. You will note, though, however, that we did go through each of these within the staff report, and staff does find that the application as presented complies with the standards of the code. As far as conditions of approval go, these are the seven reasons that you can place conditions of approval on a proposed conditional use application. The reason conditional uses are called that is because the uses tend to have certain objectionable characteristics that we may need to protect surrounding land uses with the imposition of conditions on what might be objectionable aspects of the land use. In this case, given the neighborhood and the proposed use, we found very few impacts on surrounding properties, and as such, the conditions of approval are very minimal. With that, I will leave it. I will ask if you have any questions, and if not, we can hear from the applicant.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, this is... Is anybody living in 1211 right next to it? Do we know?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps the applicant will.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Director? I noted in our next conditional use permit application presentation, there are conditions that state, for example, this conditional use permit applies to the operation of, in that case, a hotel, but in this case, it would be this contractor's shop and yard. And I don't see that kind of language in the conditions. Is that common to exclude that for such a small use?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I am not following your thread on that as...
Okay, the list of conditions for the contractors, the Jameson Plumbing, as I read it, did not include a statement or a condition that would indicate that the approval, the conditional use approval, is for that use, that size, and if things were to change, they'd have to go through a different conditional use permit. I didn't see that condition.
I try to keep... Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's probably an oversight on my part from moving fast and trying to get this on.
So that would normally be, that would normally be a condition?
Correct. And so what we will do is, you know, we delineate the use as proposed by the applicant, which they've done in their narrative. In this case, it's, you know, regular business hours. We have six employees. We expect one delivery a day. We're not doing any fabrication in the shop. And so there wasn't a need to place a whole bunch of conditions on there. It is implicit within zoning law that a conditional use is granted for a particular piece of property for a particular use, and that's all documented by the staff report.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff? All right. With that, I'll yield the floor for the applicant's presentation, if the applicant is here to present. No?
Looks like the applicant's not here, Mr. Chair.
Okie dokie. When I let the application stand in its written form. If there are no questions, then I will recite the public hearing rules. These will be the same rules for any following deliberations this evening, and please note that, as provided in the notice of public hearing and as stated within the meeting packet posted at the city website, all written comments are to be delivered to the city clerk. Those comments that were received by way of that stated procedure were either included in the meeting packet or received in time prior to the meeting and were forwarded to the Commissioners. This process must be followed to ensure comments are properly included in the permanent hearing record. I would like to ask for your attention at this time as I recite the standards for public testimony during all of this evening's proceedings. Testimony shall be directly addressed to the subject at hand. Testimony shall not be personally derogatory towards any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities are for comment only. Do not direct any questions to the commission or to staff. In the interest of time, testimony shall not be repetitious, and each speaker is allowed no more than three minutes. If your testimony fails to comply with these standards, it may be declared out of order and you will be asked to cease. Those who wish to speak will need to complete the sign-up form and hand it to the clerk. Do not approach the D I S. The forms are available on the table by the door back there, and whether you're planning on testifying now or in the next proceedings, be sure to fill out that formage. Public testimony is taken only from those who are physically present in the attendance here at City Hall. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the commission. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noises, comments, or exclamations from the audience. We will now proceed with the public hearing. Just a reminder, in the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes. You may donate your time to someone else if you would like. Both the person donating and the person receiving the gift of time must complete a sign-up sheet and both must be present. I may be gifted and received only once for a total of no longer than six minutes for any individual to speak. This public hearing is now open, and will begin by those who wish to testify in favor. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sherri Manning.
Sherri Manning, please step forward. Might have gotten the wrong pile.
Barbara E. Critt.
Barbara? Okay. The next issue. Should I?
Call the room.
More formally, ask if there's anybody?
Ask the room.
Is there anybody here in the room that wants to testify on the issue before us, which is the plumbing application for conditional use permit? Raise your hand. For, neutral, or against? We have no public testimony, it would look like. Okay with that? Seeing no one that wants to speak on this issue. Pardon?
Nobody online?
We're not taking online testimony at this time. Correct? Do we, do we have somebody online? No. Okay, that's what I thought. So I guess at this point, then, the public hearing is now closed, and Commissioners, we will deliberate. No new information may be provided. Any questions directed to city staff only. Commissioners, do you have any questions for city staff? Comments?
No, Mr. Chair. It just, it's zoned right. It's in the right place. Good call on that, that there wasn't any sort of future use. Call out on that. There typically is. Yeah. So this one seems super straightforward.
Okay. All right. Then I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Boyd?
Thank you. I move the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve the request by Michael Jameson for a conditional use permit to allow the demolition of a single-family dwelling in a build, contractor's yard, shop, office, parking, and landscaping for Bitterroot Plumbing at 1201 Baldi Mountain Road, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. The commission finds that this motion is based on the analysis and facts contained within the staff report, information presented at the hearing, and the finding that the application is in compliance with the nine criteria of conditional use permits as outlined in Sandpoint City Code 9-9-6A.3H, and subject to conditions of approval as detailed in the staff report. Staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to conditional use permits contained in Idaho Code 67-6512 and Sandpoint City Code Title IX, Chapter IX.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Benner. Madam Clerk, will you take us through a roll call?
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
Yes.
Commissioner Torpey?
Yes.
Pardon?
Motion passes?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. The second public hearing this evening is on a request by Oz Architecture on behalf of Avril Hospitality, seeking approval of application PCUP 23-0004, a conditional use permit for a 296,250 square foot hotel/ resort. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on May 28th, 2024. The order and procedure for the public hearing will be the same as I recited earlier. Again, before we proceed, I'll ask each of the Commissioners to please state that you had no ex parte contact and have no conflict of interest as pertains to this request. Commissioner Remar?
No contact and...
Mr. Simmons?
None.
None.
I have none. Commissioner Boyd?
For the record, despite my friendship with a member of the consulting for Avril, we, I have not had ex parte conversation.
Okay.
None.
None.
Thank you. About this time, then, I will yield the floor to our interim city planner Darren Fluke for an introduction of this request and an explanation of the application.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. I may have missed it, but I want to make sure that we've opened both the conditional use and the variance application, so we're going to hear them concurrently this evening, and then the commission will make separate motions on each one of the applications.
Okay, so we'll... So we will do that. You were going to do a presentation now that's pertaining to both the conditional use permit and the variance. We'll have those discussions as one thing, but separate motions on approval or denial.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
On do we get there? Okay. I'm hoping for no technological issues this evening. Let me preface this by saying, I've prepared a bunch of slides, but the images won't be great, and so my intent is to toggle over to the applicant's actual materials so that we can zoom in and out of the drawings and, you know, look at things that we, as the commission has questions or the public. So let's begin with the location. I think everybody knows where the project is located here at City Beach. It's going to be a replacement of the Edgewater Hotel that's currently existing. This image shows you where the site lies relative to the rest of the city, as well as the surrounding zoning designations within the city. So you can see this lays within the commercial A designation or C A designation. The conditional use permit consists of 296,250 square foot hotel/ resort with a maximum of 181 guest rooms. The applicant also proposes to build a 4,600 square foot restaurant, 14,262 square feet of event space, 1,391 square foot standalone restaurant, 240 structured parking places, and then a variety of guest amenities, including but perhaps not limited to fitness, wellness area, pool, recreational equipment rental, and curated retail within the hotel. The site plan looks like this. This is one of those images where we're going to probably spend some time zooming in on a better image, just to get you oriented. Of course, the railroad tracks are here to the left of the image. The parcel lines that you can see are dashed surrounding the property. The building is configured and generally in an E shape with Bridge Street being here on the south and providing a drive approach into the property here through a porticoche, and then the cars could proceed to the parking area, or they could exit out onto Dock Street and make their way back to Bridge that way. That was a far, far better design than having a horseshoe shape that came in and provided entry and exit directly onto Bridge Street. So that's a nice feature. Again, we'll get into a lot of these details quite a bit more later, so I'm not going to belabor the point on going through the site plan at this point, but more to come. Building elevation. So this is where I do want to go and show you some images from the applicant's proposal, so bear with me, and I hope this becomes more seamless as we go. I'm going to zip through these for you. Okay, so starting here. Sorry about that. All right, so here's your building elevation from the north. This would be from the Seasons Development, more or less.
You're not sharing it.
I knew it wouldn't be that easy. All right. All right, so here we are looking north. Again, this would be from the Seasons Development, more or less. To your left would be City Beach area, the sandy area in front of the project. The red line there would show you the maximum height allowed by the zone, which is 65 feet in this case, and that is, they do get a height bonus for providing structured parking. Here's our east elevation, so this would be if you were out on a boat on the lake, looking back at the project. Again, the E shape, you see the three wings that protrude out toward the beach with the main part of the building behind that. To the left of the image would be south, and that would be the porticoche over here and the entry to the hotel property. Let's give you a couple other views while we're at it. So this is our west elevation, so this would be essentially if you were standing on the railroad tracks, looking toward the lake, this is the elevation you'll see. Pointing out a couple of things here. We're going to talk more about this later, but you know, as you all know, the property does slope away from the north to the south. So what you're seeing here is the building, which is essentially at grade, and then a surface, the uppermost deck of three garage decks are at the top there. And then what you can see on this image is that the, as the ground slopes away, you see one more layer of parking with an exit here. This is the level that would lead to the porticoche, so you could pull directly into this or out of this from this location. And then there is one more parking deck below that. And then the south elevation, I think this would be considered the front of the building. This would be if you were standing at Bridge Street or in the City Beach parking lot, this is the elevation that you would see, and so the entry to the project, there's civic space over in this area here, a standalone restaurant that we mentioned before is in this location here. So you'll note the building is five stories high, again, almost 65 feet in height, and that is allowed in the A-zone when structured parking is being provided. If I can go back. And Commissioners, I should have noted as well that you are more than welcome to interrupt me at questions, so just as soon, take them as we go without getting too horribly distracted. I'm sure this slide looks familiar to you since you saw it on the previous deck. There are nine findings that are required to be made to approve a conditional use. I would say what gets at the essence of what we do with conditional uses is number four, that the use that's proposed will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing neighboring uses. Most of those other findings are some variation on that, dealing with public utilities, provision of public services, right of ways, and, you know, road capacity and things like that. But that really is the essence of a conditional use, is ensuring that the operation of this land use does not have a deleterious effect on surrounding properties or land uses. Same with the conditions. We're trying to minimize whatever adverse impacts we might be able to identify, and those could include controlling the sequence and timing of the development. There is a condition of approval regarding that. I'll talk more about that later. Controlling the duration of the development, same thing there. Assuring that the development's maintained properly, which is generally not a big concern with a project of this size and magnitude. Somebody making this sort of investment tends to take care of their property. Designing the exact location and nature of the development, which is what we're doing this evening and compliance with the site plan that you're seeing will be required as the applicant moves forward into construction or into design and construction. Requiring provision for onsite or offsite public facilities and services, this will come up later as well. There is a full traffic impact study being conducted right now. That study may or may not identify needed improvements to the surrounding road network. Generally, those would be offsite, you know, impacts to intersections, and right now, I'm thinking primarily of First and Bridge, which is an intersection that may need some improvement, and that'll be identified in the T I S. And then just calling your attention to condition of approval number seven, the commission has the latitude, in your judgment, based on evidence and testimony that you hear in the record this evening, to place conditions that are somewhat more either restrictive or are not included in the code at all. And that is why we have a hearing, is to identify what those impacts may be, so that you can condition this thing properly, so that it fits well within the fabric of the city and contributes to the city. So that's a conditional use. We also have a variance in front of us this evening, and this is kind of a technical nuance, but it's important. The request for the variance is to vary from City Code 9214, which is the provision in the commercial A zoning district that requires a zero-foot maximum setback. If you've read the staff report, I tried to go into a little bit of history on what the intent of a zero-foot setback is. It's not very common to see in a zoning ordinance a maximum setback, and it's quite restrictive in what it allows. So it would allow the applicant to have a 10-foot setback, provided that at least 50% of the building is at a zero-foot setback, and that that 10-foot setback is developed with a civic use or with public art, so something that contributes a public benefit. Through the conditional use process, that can be increased to 25 feet, but that's the only allowance allowed in code. Given the nature of both the land use, the site and situation of the land use, and some of the, just some of the site amenities or things that are on-site right now, in my judgment, it made sense to approve this variance, and this is a call for the commission to make, but you've seen the analysis in the staff report, and I'll talk more about that, those specific things, later on as well. So I just described the variance request for you. This is a blow-up of that front plaza area, and so what this shows you is, the building at its closest point is 40 feet to its frontage, its property line where it fronts Bridge Street, and at its furthest, it's 110 feet back. And so obviously, this doesn't comply with the standards of the code, but again, we think there's justification for that, and we've gone through that in the staff report, and I'll talk more about that in a bit. You did see some public comment that the Civic Plaza, there was an image that showed some car parking here, and we were able to clarify this afternoon that it's not intended to accommodate. This will, the Civic Plaza will be entirely devoted to pedestrian use, entry amenity into the project, and won't be parked with cars. And so just to walk you through this very quickly, again, you have a drive approach here that comes through the porticoche. That's represented by the dash lines there. And then vehicles can travel around there and come back out on, either go into the garage parking area, or they can come back out onto Dock Street and leave the property. So variances are a situation where a landowner asks to not have the same standards that apply to every single other property in the zone not apply to them. For that reason, both the state statutes and your own zoning ordinance are very strict about when and when you can and cannot request a variance. And so just to summarize, I'm not going to read the code for you here, because I'm sure you all saw it in the staff report, but in summary, it needs to be something that is a characteristic of the property, not something that the applicant caused themselves or something that the applicant just wishes to do and has recourse to comply with the code. Basically, it has to be something about the property that says it cannot comply with the code as written, and so therefore, it's justified to not follow the code. And so in this case, as you know from the staff report, we think that the configuration of the property, where it's situated, the size of the property, in addition to the desire to save a couple of significant trees and to preserve a view shed from going from the east to the, I'm sorry, from the west to the east, looking back toward the lake and the mountains beyond, all speak to characteristics of the property that would justify the approval of a variance. And, you know, when you think about it, this is why I put the discussion in there on the variance about what we're trying to accomplish with a zero-foot setback. And you know, when you think about it, this is why I put the discussion in there on the variance about what we're trying to accomplish with a zero foot setback. And so the idea with that is in part is that if you have a zero foot setback on both sides of your street, it starts to create a more of a human scale feel, more of an outdoor room kind of feeling, which is what you find on First Street by and large or First Ave. And this is not in any way situated like that. It's highly unlikely we'll ever see development across Bridge Street from this. And so it's sort of a moot point, whether or not the building came right up to the property line. And honestly, the the site plan works better if it doesn't. So those are the particulars of the application, more or less. There are a few things, issues of note that I want to bring to the commission's attention and that we'll need to discuss this evening. We've worked extensively with the applicant on this. There are no surprise inherent to the applicant there, here willing to address all of these issues. I think we may not be in full accord on a couple of these and that's where the commission is going to get to, you know, decide. You're going to get to figure out what what makes sense, given what the applicant's asking. So the issues specifically are related to the variance, parking, fire access, bike and pedestrian circulation, public amenities and the time limit that's proposed in the conditions of approval. So I I basically gave you my whole spiel on the variance. I'm a little, I was a little ahead on that. This image here is from the application package and basically this is speaking to that view corridor that I was talking about previously. If you're standing at the corner of the property, the city did a large design competition that resulted in a very nice document. And one of the one of the high values within that document was preserving the view shed from Bridge Street, looking to points east across the lake and back to the mountains. This is just one of the factors that would speak to approving the variance. With regard to parking, this is more of a sticky issue and it's been a difficult thing for us to solve. I'm going to show you some drawings in a second. But there is no, no disagreement over the bottom table here, parking requirements. We agree with the applicant's analysis that two hundred and forty parking places are the minimum required by the code. The applicant, as as has been stated, is proposing three levels of structured parking. Which again is considered something of an amenity. It's why you're allowed to go higher in height by providing that structured parking. Before the A zone, the commercial A zone does have a maximum height limit of forty five feet. But by providing structured parking, you're eligible to go up to sixty five. And so the applicant's doing both of those things. Providing structured parking and going to sixty five feet. So what I want to call your attention to here is no disagreement over the amounts of parking that are shown by level. But what I do want to point out is this concept of valet parking. And so this is not a strategy for parking that's contemplated by the Sandpoint City Parking Chapter in the zoning ordinance. And so the commission is going to make a judgment call on this. So of the hundred and four parking spots on level B one, forty one of those are shown to be valet spots. And thirteen of the seventy eight spots on level one are shown to be valet. So let's take a look quickly at what that looks like. And I know the applicant will talk about operationally how this works. You know, we on staff are concerned about land use and transportation and utilities and really sexy stuff like that. We don't operate hotels and so the applicant can, I'm sure, answer all your questions regarding how this will actually work. Just to get you oriented here, what we're looking at is the bottom deck of parking. This would be below grade. And so coming from the first level, there will be a ramp over here at the the north end of the property. And it looks like a pretty standard parking configuration. But just calling your attention to the red V lots. And so the idea here is that when the parking gets full, you would have valets parking cars and they would double park across the back of these cars. Those spaces in addition to these double parked spaces here. I think it's it's a fairly I think it's fairly common for valet parking to configure itself in in this configuration so that they can, you know, make maximum use of space. My difficulty with it is that this dimensionally doesn't comply with the standards of the the ordinance. Not least of which because the drive aisle wouldn't be the required twenty three feet in in width, nor does parallel parking is in the code is shown to back up to ninety degree parking in the configuration that you're seeing here. So that's the bottom layer. The next layer up from that, this is the layer, the level coming from the porticoche. So this is basically ground level right here. And you would pull into the garage and then you see it's essentially the same configuration. And then the the upper level looks like this. And the applicant has provided some above ground planters here to sort of soften that the the parking. The reason why we don't have any valet parking shown on this level is because we need fire access here and to accommodate your ladder truck to get, which will get you to the top of this building. It needs to be on the deck and it needs to have, I believe, thirty feet clear to put outriggers down and put the ladder all the way up. And I'll talk more about fire access in a minute. So in a nutshell, that that's our, that's the staff's difficulty with parking. I'm not sure how to approve it dimensionally. I think through the conditional use process. The the commission can consider operationally how this might work. And so I think, you know, hearing from the applicant on this is really going to be important. Excuse me.
Excuse me, Darren.
Yes.
Never mind. You just went to that page I was asking you to do.
Oh.
Thank you.
Shall I pause there for a second?
Just one second, please.
I'll just have a quick question while we're there. Is this a change from the materials that came out earlier? Because I thought that in the earlier materials that had suggested that all the parking was going to be valet, or was that my misinterpretation?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, good eye. This is, this is a result of working with the applicant. I I might should have noted for the commission that we've been going very fast on this with the, you know, turnover in staff in the department. We inherited this application and, you know, it had sat fallow for a time. So we put a time point on the calendar and we've gone very fast to put this together. Typically, we'd like to have all of this solved and not, you know, put it in front of the commission unless we couldn't agree with the applicant on it. And so, I mean, that's fine. This is, this is how the system is set up to work. But certain things weren't resolved when we wrote the staff report and as things, other, you know, fire access and those things came to light. The applicants moved very swiftly to make changes to the application. So.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Darren, is parking limited to guests only?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that is a great question to ask the applicant.
Okay.
That's an operational question and I, they'll have a better answer than I would. I, just one other thing to point out for the commission's consideration. You know, I think as planners, we don't, nobody wants to overpark a facility. On the other hand, the danger of underparking a facility of this size and nature is that that the overflow is going to land on the city parking lot at city beach, which already has its own pressures. And so this is a sensitive topic, of course, and one that the commission needs to consider carefully as you're, you know, going through this and making findings. So I would pass that already. Okay, so with with regard to fire access, what you're seeing here is an auto turn analysis of the ground level or upper level of parking. And essentially what you're seeing here is that a fire truck has enough space, your ladder truck, that is, which is shown here. Sorry. So it's a thirty seven foot truck with a eighteen foot, eighteen and a half foot wheelbase. And so this, this analysis shows you that the fire truck, the ladder truck could come in either forward and park on the upper deck of parking. And then it would be able to back out and leave in the event of an emergency. Or alternatively, that it could pull forward and back up onto the parking structure. And then pull out and still have enough turn radius to to leave the site. This is so your firefighters don't get stranded. If things really got crazy and a building was falling apart on fire. They want to get their apparatus out of there in that kind of situation. And so this is a hard and fast building code requirement. And it did take some back and forth between the applicant and and your building staff to work this out. But I think everybody's on the same page now. Still on fire access. So that was your west side of the building. Now I want to talk about the east side of the building. And so this is a perspective, looking from the southeast to the northwest. And so you see the entry here, the porticoche. This was the image that showed you a car parking there that is no longer part of the concept. So that's all civic space now and that cottonwood is the existing cottonwood that's there today. Looks to be very healthy and hopefully it can survive the construction. This is a, this is the detached restaurant. I've heard it referred to as the tiki bar, but in, you know, food and beverage service with access to the public and to residents or guests at the hotel. So with regard to fire access, what is required here is a twenty foot access that stretches from Bridge Street here on the left of the image all the way to the middle of the middle lobe of the building. So if if I went back to the site plan, I'm going to say, I think that's three hundred and forty one feet, give or take. And this image actually isn't, isn't showing it extend quite as far as it needs to. This has been agreed to by the applicant. And so the strategy here is that there is an existing ten foot public sidewalk on the public property that separates the beach, the sandy beach from the grassy area of the hotel today. That sidewalk is on your property and it provides access between the marina to the north and Bridge Street to the south. That's a multimodal access for bike and ped. And what the applicant is proposing is that they need a twenty foot minimum width drive aisle that will support the fire apparatus again, to get up here and be able to have the ladder stretch, stretch out to the top of the building. And so what we've proposed or what the applicant's proposed is to build a, using the public sidewalk and adding an additional ten feet on their property to build a new facility that is, that is rated to serve that a truck. I think it's seventy five thousand pounds. And I wrote concrete in the conditions and there'll probably be some discussion about that in a, in a bit. But twenty feet in width, it's going to create a nice boardwalk scenario. I would think of this as sort of the seam in between the public and the private realm. And the way the conditions are written, it's meant to encourage the public to use it and the public is to have open and free access to that facility at all times. Because what we're doing is sharing access. I mean, the alternative would be for the applicant to take and build all twenty feet on their property. We thought it made sense to share in return for getting some other amenities from the project. Specifically, and you've seen this in the conditions, would be to extend the twenty foot boardwalk from the middle of this middle lobe all the way to the the marina. There is a trade off involved with that and the applicant's going to talk about this in some detail, I'm sure. But it would mean somewhat less green area up here at this upper end of the the project, ten feet to be specific. If the commission is persuaded that, you know, it's better to have the green space than than the generous boardwalk. I would say that, you know, best, best practice would be to not go smaller than twelve feet for a facility of this size, serving this amount of activity between the marina and a hundred and eighty one guest rooms with a restaurant and all the amenities that go with the hotel. That's in my, you know, professional opinion as a planner and transportation planner, having worked on many different alternative transportation and multimodal type systems. That said, the condition right now says that the applicant will simply build a twenty foot boardwalk from south to north. Running the property, Mr. Chairman.
Is the, the twenty foot walk, is it only for fire access to that middle portion of the hotel? Or would it be fire access all the way to the north property, north of the property?
Mr. Chairman, fair question. It, it would support a, well, let me back up. The fire access is only meant to go to the middle lobe. At the middle lobe, it does need to flare into a thirty foot configuration there, again, to support the outriggers of the truck. They can't go out on the grass or on the sand and so they have to have that thirty feet to put, put the outriggers down. From the, from that point north, it's not contemplated to provide fire access. It's not needed because we have it on the north end of the building already. And there is, there will be a hydrant at that location. And so this is, this was all driven by the need of the fire code and the, the negotiations between the the applicant and the building official.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Boyd.
So they are, you're not asking them to have the twenty feet from south to north of their border to go all the way?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the conditions of approval would require a twenty foot boardwalk from north to south. Only the south, three hundred and forty feet or whatever's required to get to the middle would be fire rated. Or that is rated for a fire apparatus to drive on it. They wouldn't need to go.
So in essence, they don't really need to go twenty feet wide from the middle lobe to the north side of their property because there is no reason as far as fire access reasons.
Exactly.
So it would just be for aesthetics or continuity?
It, it would be for continuity in part, but primarily it would be to provide multimodal circulation, which is another thing required by the code. In my judgment, there's going to be a lot of bike and pet activity. This does connect to the Ponderay Bay Trail on the north. You've got the marina on the north and then you've got a whole lot more activity in this facility than you do in the existing facility. And so in my way of thinking, that was if the, if the applicant needed public property to provide fire access, it seemed like not a big ask to extend that further north to the property in return for that.
But it does take away from that green space.
It does.
And currently it's ten feet right now.
Currently it's twenty five feet of green space. It would be fifteen if the board.
Oh, I was talking about the sidewalk. The sidewalk currently is.
So the sidewalk's entirely on public property. So they would not be building any sidewalk on public property or on their own property north of that fire.
That middle lobe.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks for sticking with me on that. That was a lot. Any other questions on that? This is what the circulation map looked like in the application package. And so you see that the, they do identify that as multimodal access from south to north, just exactly as you have described, Commissioner. And then, of course, there is five feet of striped access along Dock Street that extends from the the property to the north, all the way down to Bridge Street.
And Mr. Floco, while you are there.
Yeah.
Go back to the north end of the building where I see what's described there as service yard. Is that the fire access from the north side? Is that what we're seeing? Is the fire access from the north side?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant can, can explain this better for you, but I think this is most of their back of house function. And so I think they'll take deliveries up here. I think you could park a fire truck up in this location. And there'll also be, I'm sure, the dumpsters and maybe located. Okay. So I think we, I painted you a word picture on this, but this is what it looks like. Three hundred and twenty feet. I was mistaken by twenty feet. So from Dock Street on the south. I'm sorry, Bridge Street on the south, you have a twenty foot fire lane going to this point, the middle of the building. I, this shows twenty six feet. My understanding was this had to be thirty. So we'll need to verify that with the fire chief and we can enforce that at the building permit stage if it are, if thirty feet is what's needed there. Commissioner, this show you the twenty five foot setback there. This is the existing public sidewalk as it sits today. And that's, that's lawn today as well. And then there is an existing tree over here that's being saved in addition to this one on the south.
I have a question for you.
Can I go home?
On that, that surface, just because of its proximity to the water. Are you aware or any other city staff that might be here, is there a suitable permeable? Permeable surface that could both allow infiltration of stormwater as well as support the weight of the kind of truck we're talking? Does such a material exist?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's to be determined. I don't believe we've seen any geotech on this yet. But the applicant will be on the hook to design a road section that will support that 75,000 pound vehicle. And I, my understanding is it's going to take some digging and some good design to build that sub base to support that. Um, so I don't know why I showed you that image again. Did you like it? One, one thing that we haven't fully worked out yet, and again, this was because it was a function of time. And none of us are quite sure yet how to provide 27 amenities. I think this is something we probably haven't struggled with before in San Point, having not seen a building of this size. But I did put the code verbatim in here for you. At least one substantial amenity is described in 9216E. Provided for every 2,500 square feet of structure footprint. So some very quick and easy math, 65,000 square feet gets you 20 required amenities. I think we have some room to negotiate with the applicant on this. In my mind, providing a wider pathway. Is an amenity to the public and, and can certainly be counted toward these amenities. The civic spaces they're providing certainly qualify. Public art also qualifies in the code. But this is something that we're still struggling a bit with on, on how to get there.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Boyd.
Do we have a definition of what substantial means? Cause that, you know, means something different to everybody. So what is that in the code substantial amenity?
Yeah. So I'm not going to go to the code because it's going to be cumbersome. But I can look it up while, while the applicant's presenting for you. Basically, the code only lists three items. One is civic space, one is public art. And I think the third one is providing shade and cover to like public right away. Like if you were to build a building. Next to the sidewalk, you would build an awning off your building to shade the sidewalk and provide weather protection.
So under those three categories, subject to interpretation?
Typically not, but in, this is not a typical application. And because you're in a public hearing, I think, and, and Fonda might slap my hand, but I think the commission has some, some latitude to use some judgment. In, in this situation, both in the amount and the type of amenities.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Do those amenities have to be on this property?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'll look that up and let you know. I, I, I think so, but I'll verify that for you. Thank you.
Chairman. Chairman, I have a quick question. Would a public restroom, shower facilities be considered an amenity?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I, I think that's a judgment call for the commission and I. But it seems reasonable to me. In my humble opinion.
You can simply add a condition that says that the 27 required amenities will be defined at the time of building permit application.
Thank you.
And adding on that, Mr. Chairman, giving a little guidance to staff on what this commission feels are substantial public amenities would be appreciated as we. Go into negotiating the building permit. Time limitations, this is a fairly minor issue. And this is another section of Sandpoint code that I find to be strangely specific. You don't always see provisions written this way. And that's why I put it in for you directly. Because in the conditional use section of the code, it says that the proposed work shall commence within one year following the date of the planning. Commission or city council approval of the conditional use permit and be diligently pursued. Or said approval and permit shall be rendered automatically null, void and of no right or recourse. So for a project of this size and complexity, that's a very difficult condition to meet. Previous conditional uses in front of this commission and thinking of the, the project north of the super one, the Milltown project. Had a time limit on it. So in both, in the spirit of honoring both. The, what the code says and the difficulty, complexity of this project, we wrote two conditions, specifically conditions two and three. Which you see here, and I'll just, you know, point out to you that we took some liberties with condition number two. Where we just said, you know, we consider that is, design is working diligently on the project. And that if you were to pull a, or if you were to apply for a demolition permit by September 2 of 25. We consider this condition complied with. The applicant I know wants to discuss this with the commission, so I won't belabor the point. Condition number three just tries to honor that idea of not having construction go on forever. And I know they'll want to talk to you about this as well. So we put a condition that CFOs would be issued within three years. Of the issuance of the demolition permit. And so we felt like that was reasonable. We know the applicant wants to build it as soon as possible. We also know that things happen and in construction and especially with projects this size. So. Okay, that's it. I'm going to stop talking and let the, the applicant stock. If the commission had questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, first, yeah.
Hey, when does the, uh, when is the traffic, when's the trip report come back?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we have a trip generation and distribution letter, which indicated the need for the TIS. I think the applicant can tell you when we expect that. I, I'm told it's in process and sooner is better than later.
And those don't take into account, those don't take into account pedestrian. Things like that, right? I mean, it's literally just sort of ID, IDT. Vehicle focused.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's what it's looking at is vehicular impact on surrounding transportation facilities. So primarily they're, they're going to be saying where the trips want to, where they're coming from and where they're going. In your city and is that going to have an inordinate impact on, on any one intersection?
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Could you go to slide 10 real quick?
Slide 10?
Yeah. And this might not be the best one to describe it, but I was sort of losing. The pedestrian traffic flow.
Is that the one?
Yeah, this will get us there. Yep. So where do people move relative to where do cars move?
Okay. So here you are, you see the cursor. This is you coming under the bridge. And now you're on Bridge Street, the existing Dock Street is essentially where you see it here. Um, in the parking lot for the, the Best Western is here.
Gotcha.
And so cars will move in this direction and they will come into the driveway here. What you see here is queuing for four vehicles underneath the awning, three underneath the awning, plus a little bit of fourth. And then they would proceed in this direction out and either go into the garage. Or they would leave back out onto Dock Street and come out onto the public right away here. You did have, you do have a. A response from a citizen in your packet.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And did that, did that resonate here? I mean, I, I was trying to sort of wrap my head around how the setback. Would allow a little more pedestrian throughput, I guess is my point.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I, I would say point well taken. To be perfectly honest with you, I was kind of gobsmacked that. There was an image that showed cars here because I, I guess it was one of those things I missed when I was going too fast. The site plans didn't show it, but that one rendering did. Thankfully, the applicant has said, no, that's entirely civic space. I think it's a point well taken that a five foot sidewalk in this location.
Reasonable.
Yeah, is the absolute minimum.
Yep.
I got one more question and then.
It's a broad one. In terms of granting the variance, that can be as conditional as. Whatever we sort of bake into it, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's right. The, the variance is essentially a binary question. They either meet the findings or they don't. And if they meet the findings, they're allowed to comply with the site plan that they gave you. But yes, the, these two are tied together inextricably intertwined, as we say in the business.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Remark.
Yes. Um, the 3,600 or 3,500 square foot area that's food and beverage, will that be open to the public?
Mr. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's my understanding. Yes, all the facilities will be open to the public.
Will be open to the public. Okay. And, and then again, if I saw that chart correctly, it was 181. Parking places before we start playing with the ballet and everything else.
Sure.
How many units are in here?
181 is the maximum number of rooms that are shown currently.
We're allowing one parking place per unit?
That's what the code requires, one parking place per room.
Yeah, current. Now, are those single bed bedrooms, double bed bedrooms, or are they two bedroom? Are there suites up on top?
Mr. Chairman, there are suites. Go back to the floor plan. So the suites are shown in the dark gold or dark brown here. Dang it, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that. So here you are on the level next to the upper parking level. So you see the suites are these units here that are on the edge. The end of the E's and then the floor above that, you've got them on each level. And then there is one floor above that or two floors above that, sorry. Where you have them again on the, the northern two lobes. And then on the upper level, you've got this event space here on this full wing and then suites here.
Yeah. So, so we're talking 17 suites. I, I just find it hard to believe that one vehicle. Will only be utilized for people that are going to be spending night in a room in a suite or multiple in a suite that. The concept of the one parking placement, you informed me in our last meeting that that was. Uh, city council approved that with the thought that some people would bicycle to work. Well, this is a building where people aren't going to come and rent the room for the night and then bicycle to work. So this is a facility that's going to be used for. Just having people roll in, have people rolling out and making money. I, and I'm, I'm just concerned about the parking. Uh, both the design of the parking area, but if the fire department accepts it, that's fine and dandy. But my concern is, and somebody had brought it up earlier, is that I, I think some pressure may end up on the parking area. Which is for City Beach right now. And as a 34 year resident, putting a boat in almost every year. Only two weeks ago or less than that, it was full. It was full at 10 o'clock on Friday morning, just jammed. And so if we were only even talking at 17 suites, if maybe one half, so we'll say eight. Of them had an extra part, you'd be eight, eight parking places short. I just think this issue should be considered. Thank you.
Can come up. Yes, we can.
Mr. Chair.
That more thoroughly in deliberation. Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
If you can clarify something for me, Darren, could you go to your last slide before the question slide? I think it's slide 23, 24. Yes, the time limitations. So it says here. Demolition permit before, honor before September 2025. In our packet. Um, it says within two years of the commissioner's decision. So. Point of clarification, is it the one year?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. The, the, um, the code actually says one year.
One year.
And in this, we wrote the condition, however, to say that we would accept. The fact that detailed design of the construction drawings is going to take some time. And the applicant intends to operate the existing facility until Labor Day of 2025. And so our thinking was that that, that time period, almost two years. Is sufficient to have a demolition permit.
Okay.
Submitted for.
So that's your recommendation?
Yeah, well, that's how the condition is written.
And then my next question, sorry. The second point about, you know, within three years. You know, be completed. You mentioned things do come up. So extensions, we can also put in extensions. I think we've done that in a couple of our issues that came to us. You know, two one year extensions, I believe, at our discretion, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, what was contemplated here was that if it took longer than the three years from the demolition permit. That the applicant would simply come and present to the commission to show good faith. Progress on the project and explain to you, you know, what, what delays were happening. We, the way this is written is that that would happen at a public meeting in front of the commission and not a public hearing. And so you wouldn't be taking public comment at that. That said, you know, this, obviously this is yours to write as you see fit and you could certainly adjust that. And I know the applicant wants to talk about that.
But it would be a decision of the commission, not of city staff.
Correct.
I have a question and that is when we look at, at. The height of the building because of providing structured parking. Was the intent of that code, does anybody know, is the intent of that code? Because it was thought the parking would be under the building, so the building could go higher or is that not necessarily the intent? Do you know?
Mr. Chairman, fair question. I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Do you, um, do you know how the proposed elevation of the top of the building compares with the seasons, the top of the building elevation?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we have a cross section, but it goes from downtown to the building. So I don't know the answer to that, but I'll bet the applicant can get you close.
Great. Okay. Question about stormwater in the staff report. Uh, it states that the applicant will complete the design of the stormwater disposal facilities. Uh, generally in the same timeframe as the traffic impact study. That was in the staff report. In the same sort of manner that before the issuance of a building permit, that would be done. There'd be a stamped engineer plan of the stormwater disposal facilities. And I did not see that in the proposed conditions. Structured as you have condition number one for the traffic impact study, I would have thought that that would be. Pretty much the same language, except for a stormwater management plan or mitigation plan or something. Is that, was that your intention?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes. And just point out one bit of sausage making for you here is we did collaborate on this staff report a bit. And so I think that that was, that section of the staff report was written by the city engineer. And it was on me to get a condition of approval in there. And typically we would have a condition to that effect.
Okay. So you'll add it in there. I mean, that would be, that, that seems your intent. So that's.
If, if directed by the commission, we'll certainly add it in. I don't feel comfortable adding it without your direction since it's not in there now.
Okay.
So if you'll make a note for that and it, but I think it is. It's not a big issue because it's pretty well settled that before we issue a building permit, all the, the site improvements have to be designed and approved. Before they get.
Okay. And this leads to another question based on, based on what you just said. So this would probably be considered. An offsite improvement, but my interest or questions have to do with the. Capacity of the water system and the sewer system. And the staff report indicates that the existing water. Distribution system is adequate and the collection and I assume the lift station at City Beach is adequate as well. Um, has that been? Has. Has that been determined by someone's engineer, the city's engineer, the, the developer's engineer? Has that? My, my concern, and I could go into some detail if you wish, but my concern has to do with the dead ending of the 10 inch main that runs along San Point Avenue. That has a six inch section in it below the, below the, um. The overpasses and. Uh, there might be quite a bit of water that needs to flow as we talked about all these fire trucks. And I'm not a fire expert, the fire chief is, but to conduct an analysis of the capacity of the existing system to. To meet the city's own standards and industry standards for this sort of thing. And then the wastewater collection system capital improvement plan from a couple of years ago. Uh, indicated that the lift station at City Beach was in need of complete replacement. And that the sewer line running along the existing hotel is a concrete sewer line that's in need of rehabilitation. Are, are those things brought into this somehow? Are those things? Does this, does this development trigger some action? Does this, does this development trigger some action along those lines?
Mister Chairman Commissioner, it very well could, and I think it would be wise at this juncture to bring up the city engineer Brendan Staglin, and I think he can speak to this in just a bit more detail than than I could.
Here he comes.
I was just gonna suggest that.
Hello, yeah, so um my understanding is that uh w- we typically wouldn't require that at the CUP process, so it is policy for us to, you know, at the discretion of Public Works to, um, if we think it's um, uh, you know, if it's necessary to have the applicant do an analysis of the water system capacity for a specific use, that we would require that before building permit issuance. Um, I can say uh at this point, because we're really just looking at schematic plans, um, we, wi- with regard to the fire flow availability at hydrants, we have, uh, we we regularly test the um, the pressure uh at the required fire flow of those hydrants, and um, I have not seen any issue of the of the hydrants that are in this specific vicinity here. And we are really close to the intake at the lake, lake plant. So um in that part of the system, we typically, from the water system master plan and all the testing information that I've seen, we we typically have really good pressures um in this part of our system. With regard to the um capacity of our system to feed direct fire flow to like a building sprinkler system, that's also something that they would, the applicant would be required to demonstrate that they can meet that at the time of building permit. And then um, so with regard to sewer, we are in the process of actually doing a capital project, a city-funded project to replace that lift station at City Beach specifically, along with two other ones in our system. And uh we used the the proposed data for demand for this project to size that, you know, to feed to our consultant who's who's preparing the design for that. So as that design process is ongoing, if there's any major changes to the the required, you know, the anticipated demand uh from this hotel, we would um, you know, incorporate that into the design before that gets built.
Okay, and the and the rehabilitation of the sewer line, is that uh something that's being contemplated, or is that something that can be deferred for some later date?
Um, and uh which sewer line?
It's the one uh shown on the, in the capital improvement plan for the city's wastewater collection system. It runs uh along the, it's shown along the east side of the existing hotel, running north and south. That's where it's shown, I I don't know where it is exactly, but that's.
So there there is a sewer main uh that runs underneath the existing building, actually underneath a pool, or what used to be the pool, I think, that if I I can believe that's the one you're talking about. Um, the the direction that we gave during the review of this was that um that could be abandoned, because it doesn't, my understanding is that it doesn't serve anything else other than this hotel. And and we and we don't allow s- uh public mains to be under buildings, certainly for, but that's just a historical kind of anomaly.
Thank you.
And Mister Chair, I do know that the applicant civil engineer is online and available. You have more questions?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
And I have more questions. Um, so I was just referring to the staff report, there's a few things, if you could clarify for me. We've got on the chart on page twelve of our staff report, it said snow storage. It says no, snow storage is proposed on the west side of Dock Street and cannot be approved. Why can that not be approved, is my question? Didn't quite understand that.
Mister Chairman Commissioner, um, there's not space enough to accommodate snow storage on the.
On that area.
Dock Street, yeah, it's um landscaped and um burned, or it's got a retaining wall, I guess, holding up the the bridge and uh railroad, so.
Thank you for that, and um number eight of the staff report on page nine, it said the property has access and frontage on the existing Bridge Street right-of-way and proposes a single driveway to bridge with additional access and circulation provided by Dock Street. Oh, I'm sorry, that's not what, uh, there is some ambiguity regarding the current ownership of Bridge Street travel lanes and sidewalks. Who who's that between, who owns it, who's doesn't?
Yeah.
Do we, is it still ambiguous?
Mister Chairman and Commissioner, let me show you the ALTA, there it is. I'm seeing it's a property line. Actually, you know what, the the site plan actually shows it as well as anything, let me go to because this is, the ALTA is confusing, so.
Yeah, that's why it was confused.
Yeah, so what, so if you're at the north end of the property, what you see here is that Bridge Street cuts fully across the applicant's property on the north and then goes into the seasons there, and that that.
Dock Street.
That's Dock Street. Dock, thank you, you know, between Dock and Bridge, and surprised I got it right as much as I did. And then um the existing Bridge Street, from that point right there, is primarily um in public ownership, until you then get down to the south end of the property, and you can see that it chamfers off the corner of the applicant's property. We've um, in what we've requested is that the applicant simply um dedicate those portions to the public, um, because there's no, there's not really a desire on the public side to have the applicant maintaining um what is functioning as public right-of-way, and it definitely makes more sense.
Because we have that bike lane.
Correct.
Area, um, so that leads to the next question. Um, in our staff report, it also is requesting the applicant to go six feet wide. I'm trying to understand the reasoning for that, because it's a five-foot wide path the entire way. Um, so trying to figure out why go six feet wide in front of the um hotel property when it is fine at five feet, is there, as far as safety issues, is that a um requirement from I don't know, fire, police?
Uh, Mister Chairman Commissioner, that that actually was um initially a requirement of the city engineer. We were looking at a requirement for curb gutter and sidewalk along that west side. The reasoning being that there's going to be a lot more traffic on this street than there is today, just given the added um activity at this facility, which is way bigger than the current facility. So you've got all the seasons traffic, you've got all the bike and ped traffic that are using that today, plus um the hotel today, plus all the extra from this, and so that was.
You see Brian coming.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add that um my my intent with that was, i- if you if you see the way that the parking lot is adjacent to Dock Street right now, they're kind of using the Dock Street drivelines as their um what I call their access, I like the space to back in and out of those spaces. And um I've found that when you're doing geometric design of parking lots and and uh streets, that the the required uh width for providing that backing, the the movement to back in and out of parking spaces is more than what you need for direct two-way travel. And so since there will basically not, no longer be that continuous access of parking spaces off of Dock Street, um, we've kind of thought that uh we would be able to get the lane width for single lane travel and add a foot to the to the bike lane to provide a little bit more room there for pedestrians and bikes.
So is it narrower at that spot as it is um than at Seasons with their parking, in their parking area?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that comparatively, I have not measured that, um, the Seasons one, to see how it compares.
Because if I understand from the previous couple of questions I asked, that area is um basically right away, it's not owned, or ambiguous, I should say, owned. So we're requiring, and just to stripe it, just to, is is that the requirement?
Yeah.
Basically some paint?
Yeah, it's just to, i- it's just an opportunity to require that the stripe get moved a little bit, that we reevaluate that with the new layout. My uh guess is that there, in order to build the foundation for this building, there's also, you might have noticed, um, some water and sewer main relocations in Dock Street, it's going to require them to basically demo that entire pavement anyway, so it's going to have to be rebuilt at the end of the project, so. And I, and I also just wanted to bring up, I think that there was also, and correct me if I'm misunderstanding your comment about, but were you also asking about the Bridge Street ownership, not the Dock Street ownership?
Oh, you're right, it was the Bridge Street ownership.
So wh- what the record of survey that was prepared by the applicant's surveyor showed from um investigating previous recorded instruments, is that Dock Street is actually, you can see it's labeled as a private a private right-of-way, private easement. So I I think just to clarify, I don't believe the condition that we're putting on this is that we're going to have them dedicate Dock Street as public right-of-way. The issue is on Bridge Street, this record of survey also indicates that it's a separate, so if you can pan down, you can see it, it it does not, there's a small portion of that, but it it delineates as if it's a private lot and not a public right-of-way. Um, so our direction after um kind of discussing it and going back and forth with the applicant was that they had offered to dedicate that as public right-of-way, as part of the CUP, as a condition of the CUP, without the city acknowledging that we don't agree that that, you know, w- without the city ignore, uh agreeing that that's not our property. So um I I I I still find it hard to believe that that is not public right-of-way. Um, but I'm also not a surveyor, so I have to rely on the stamp that was put on the record of survey. So hopefully that was, that clarifies that.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question, um, be- because, yes, of the increase in uh all traffic, pedestrian and vehicular in this. I know at one point, I don't remember how far back that was, um, but there was a rather dramatic redesign of the Bridge Street first half intersection. Um, do we know if there's anything on the horizon, is is there, what is the time horizon on it, and a redo of that intersection, if if it still is on the books?
Mister Chairman, Brandon may have some information on that, I do not.
Brandon or or Jason maybe even, I don't know. We can talk to any city staff, it doesn't have to.
Good evening Commissioners, um, Commissioner Hastings, I think you're referring to the downtown revitalization phase three, which is the uh Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency's funded implementation of our uh downtown streets design. Um, at present, we are, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Brandon, but we're looking at possibly going into design for that next year. Um, soonest that we could possibly see the construction on the first and Bridge Street intersection commence, it'd probably be twenty-twenty-six or twenty-twenty-seven. So, but this project might affect that timeframe as well, as we, you know, investigate the uh traffic impacts from this, and compare it to our existing adopted multimodal transportation plan and other concepts that have been explored, including in the design report that we accepted last year. But that's probably no sooner than two to three years in the future that we begin those improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other question for city staff at this point?
No.
Okay. Well, then, uh, I would like to yield the floor for the applicant for their presentation.
Hi, everyone, Brian Avril with Avril Hospitality. Uh, take a second to introduce the team that's with me here, of Will McDonald, Becky, Charlie with Oz Architecture, and Justin Doll with uh Avril Hospitality, Justin and Will are both with Avril Hospitality, um, with our design and development folks. And then Jennifer Stapleton's been helping as well. Well, thank you, guys, for taking the time to prepare and all the work that's went into this application today. Um, uh, I thought it would be worth uh telling you a little bit about who we are as a family and who we are as a company, um, as you think about uh what will contribute to Sandpoint and the community. And we've been, as a family, been in hospitality since nineteen forty-five. We got our start in hospitality at a place called the Flathead Lake Lodge in Big Fork, Montana. It's a guest ranch, um, it's very unique on the shores of Flathead Lake. I uh had an opportunity to to grow up there and work all through the property, and I developed my love uh for hospitality there and the values and the culture. Um, I kind of brought from there through my career, and I continued my education in hospitality and worked there um in the industry ever since. Um, we are from Whitefish, Montana, so Whitefish, as you guys know, is about three and a half hours uh from here, it's a very similar community in size, uh ski resort, lake, seasonality. Um, it's very nice for us to have that experience, it gives us an understanding of uh the community of Sandpoint, some of the opportunities uh that exist, some of the challenges that the community goes through. Um, but of course, those aren't limited to how do you grow business outside of the summer season, uh, jobs, livable wages, housing, all those are things that we're very familiar with in Whitefish. Uh, we've been able to work uh consistently in the industry with those challenges and opportunities, and hope to bring that experience with us, the Sandpoint. Um, we are in Whitefish, we're um, we're a large employer, we're not the largest employer. We have about four hundred or so staff members in Whitefish. Uh, we take that responsibility very, very seriously, um, we develop uh training programs, manager development programs, full benefit packages. Uh, we provide housing, staff housing, for about a third of our staff members in Whitefish. Um, and when it comes to to here, I bring up that number because it'll be commensurate to uh the staff count that we'll have here at the property in Sandpoint. Uh, being that larger employer, we understand, um, and we kind of build a culture of uh promoting from within. Um, people can use the skills and knowledge that they learn from us to rise through our organization or work outside of our organization and other hospitality industries, um, kind of around the, around the country and the world. Um, we have a kind of a, to that example, we have a lady who is a eleven-year veteran of the Best Western Edgewater. Uh, when we purchased the property two years ago, uh, we promoted her as the general manager, as a first managerial job. She's been thriving there ever since, and we're really looking forward to her and her growth with us in the future. But we believe in that, and I think we'll be a great employer for the community as we go forward. Um, uh, some of the properties that are on the screen behind you, we thought, these are the properties that we own and operate today. Uh, the Lodge at Whitefish Lake is at the top left-hand corner. Um, it's a full-service resort on the lake in Whitefish. Uh, the next one to the right is the Doubletree Edgewater, uh, located in Missoula, Montana. It's on the Clark Fork River, across from the University of Montana. And then the bottom uh left-hand corner is a Firebrand, uh, it's located downtown Whitefish, very different and distinctive in design, uh, we pay a lot of attention to our design, making it specific to the community uh that they're in, and I'll let the wonderful architects here, Becky, uh, speak to that one a little bit more, but I um think they accomplished that same thing. Uh, that we'll look at a little later. Uh, so we, I thought, I thought it may be good to understand a little bit about how, John, could you go to this next slide? Yeah, um, how we interact with the community, um, with community events, and kind of our philosophy and our personal passion that we have uh with those events, I put all these. And our personal passion that we have with those events, I put all these images up here just to speak to them. As they're all events that I think everyone's very familiar with that happened at the property today. But we, as a company, personally, we would look to continue these type of events, these events. Similar events. I believe that one of the roles a hotel resort does in a community is to foster. Events like this and help or local organization. Whether it's fundraising, whether it's providing room nights, whether it's providing services, whether it's providing donations. Or kind of all of the above, hotels contribute to communities in lots and lots of ways, so. I think most notably, people are pretty familiar with the Chafe One Fifty, the Beer Fest on the lawn. The kids triathlon or just using the lawn for fireworks, we again would. Plan to continue all that, that's very normal course of action and we would want, we'll promote and expand those type of things for us in the future. Back one slide, so also just as a company and family, these are some of the things that we do in the communities that.
If you don't mind, there's requests for. Would you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Sorry, soft speaker anyways. So these are some of the things that we do as a as a company and a family. We, the very top one is a, we purchased thirty acres of wet kind of sensitive. Wetland area in Whitefish, it was zoned high density and very sensitive to the community, we purchased it. Turned it into a wetland preserve, created little nature trails through it. Today, it's used by grade schoolers to see the wetland and kind of tour around and see just the different vegetation and whatnot. Turns out to be a really neat neat situation. The next one, the Whitefish Lake Institute, so we created a program, it's a one percent program. It funds a community foundation that we turn around and donate a hundred percent of those funds to a local organization. In this case, it's the Whitefish Lake Institute. Today, it's that one percent program has generated over about a million dollars, which is all funded that Whitefish Lake Institute. And their mission is to protect the water quality of Whitefish Lake. We would anticipate having a very similar foundation and concept in Sandpoint. What the organization is that it would go to, we haven't decided yet, but we would plan to do very, something very similar. The next one is, we're currently in the process of donating sixteen acres. Of land that's adjacent to some city parks and recreation areas to a group called Save the Farmland with their mission. Is to teach sustainable farming to local residents. And I know everyone's worked really hard on the City Beach Master Plan. We would hope to be involved in that and participate in whatever level we can, but I think our fundraising mechanisms and. Spirit will will lend to the cities, to the city, so we look forward to being involved in that. Economic benefits, so there is a number of reasons, a number of things that hotels do for communities. One is an economic benefit, we anticipate about three hundred jobs being created with the with the hotel. There is a very interesting ratio. It's for every one dollar spent in a hotel room night, it equates to about nine dollars spent in the community. Directly and indirectly, this is a Montana statistic, but it generally applies nationwide. And what I mean by one dollar spent in a hotel room versus nine dollars spent indirectly and indirectly in the community is. A direct dollar spent in the community might be a hotel guest going to dinner. It could be a hotel guest going to the grocery store, buying gas. So on and so forth, going to a retail shop. Indirect is those shop owners and businesses taking and reinvesting that money into something else. So it's a staggering number, I didn't put the number in there, but it's a very staggering number. And it's why communities look to hotels to be great economic drivers in their community. I put some generalized ratios there. About twenty two percent of those funds go into retail shops, twenty percent go into restaurants. And bar sales and the list goes on and on to different industry types, obviously, from there. Property taxes, we'd think the hotel would generate an additional five to six hundred thousand in property taxes in the city as well as the county. The local tourism tax, I think, would be about two and a half million dollars generated. And as we all know, that fifty percent of that goes to roads and street repairs. Might speak to those intersections, definitely speaks to. You know, I I I from a mountain town, I understand how potholes and lumps and bumps in roads are created in winter mountain towns, so. I'm always happy to see that number there. The next section, we, when we purchased the Edgewater two years ago. We went to a variety of different places in the community, community leaders, the city. And we asked questions, what is the city looking for? Our goal would be to purchase the property, develop it into a hotel and resort. What could that property do for the city? What's the city missing? What were they looking for? We walked away with four major priorities which are listed here in no particular order. And probably not an exhaustive list, but these were the the common ones that that I heard. First point was to revitalize the hotel, to create a hotel that is timeless and iconic, something that the community can be proud of. Today and into the future. And I think that one, Becky will speak to that a little bit later in in the design. I hope I touched on a little bit of that as who we are as a company and how we treat individuals that work for us and and where they can go in our company. The next point was meeting and events. So we have about fifteen thousand square feet, it's a little bit less, there's fourteen thousand two hundred and some. Meeting and event space in the property that will accommodate about a three hundred and fifty person plated dinner. We are very familiar with all types of group and events. We operate them today in all of our hotels, whether that's weddings, association business, ongoing education. And the list goes on and on, but we're very familiar with that space and will, and of course that. Business comes at great times of year, spring, fall and winter, which as we know, is always a benefit to the community. Economic driver in the winter and shoulder seasons, as we talked about above. The one to nine ratio is probably the best example of that economic driver, but in addition to that, the jobs that are created. The taxes that we touched on earlier all speak to that economic driver as well as the meeting space. And then the commitment to community and public space, we touched on that a little bit. About how we look for the relationship with with community organization groups and events. We'll plan to continue that as well.
Hi, I'm Becky Stone with Oz Architecture. Just a little bit about Oz and our background, like Brian did, but. This is our office, we have about a hundred and fifty architects, interior designers, experienced designers, we do a lot of placemaking. We're based in Denver, Colorado, but work sort of all over the nation, so we'll. We're sixty years old this year as a firm, so we've been around a long time. I've been at Oz since nineteen ninety eight, mostly all, if I could wear a fleece or jeans, like that's where I want to work, so. It's been the resort communities, hospitality and ski resorts for the most part. We do have national experience, we don't do stamp it out kind of product, we do independent. Batique hotels and real ski resort experience design, not sort of the same thing every time. Never, we haven't repeated anything. We have on this property and with Avril Hospitality, but also Oz as a philosophy are really proponents of. Sustainable design and especially. Working in mountain towns, like there's a, I don't know if everybody knows about it, but there's a kind of mountain town twenty thirty and like, how do we make sure we can. Sort of help aid climate change, and so in all of our designs, it's just kind of built in now to. Go at least to code and way above that and trying to be really sustainable with our approach. Little bit about the project. So I think we heard about this a little bit and just where we are on the beach, so just some aerial views, but. In our program, we can come back to that, I think. So our pink site, one of the things when we were, when we came up here for the first time and started looking at the the really conceptual design of the hotel was to. We were just, it's it's a, it's a super unusual site, right, to find a site in a resort community or in a in a mountain town that's. On the water, but also adjacent to this kind of great historic town that has all this. Has been built over time, and so we were kind of transfixed by that idea, and so our site, obviously, the railroad is right behind us. And then and the beach on the other side, so this slide and and we might not have been thinking about these exact buildings, but the the pictures on the. Slide, one, you know, we're we're kind of aiming to the city on the left. And aiming to the water on the right, so we've been, and when we talk about the elevations, we'll show it, but you kind of have this architecture. That's adjacent to us facing the lake and the previous, you know, sort of brick buildings and. Like rich textures and sort of more historic street on the on the left, so how do we sort of mesh those two and. Bridge that. So part of our concept is this duality, right, we have kind of the grittier. Part of the railroad tracks and the beauty of sort of historic downtown, but also the softness of the lake and the beach, and we really want to embrace that. Lakefront idea. So on the lakeside, really trying to make the architecture talk to nature. A little bit more woods and a little softer finishes and for sure bringing the lawn and sort of greenery into the architecture on the lakeside. And a little bit more of the textures and harder edges and colors that represent what Sandpoint is. As an urban fabric on the left facing the train. So it gives you a little bit, that just a little bit of insight to our thought process when you look at our elevations then, so this side is. Looking at the beachside, obviously, so you're looking at the more woods and when when. When there were some slides up before with the elevation, but the dark color is that sort of brick and the more texture and the. More authentically kind of downtown Main Street sort of finishes and then the lighter color is the more woods kind of. Getting a little bit marine. Towards the lake. On this, you can, we called it a tiki bar at one point, but it's really kind of our lake pavilion, so the lakefront pavilion down there in the lower corner, yeah. So that is a public amenity, so it is a restaurant, food and beverage, but also very, it's it's kind of right at the. At the spring point of the trailhead, which we think is really important and it can serve. The whole public beach. It connects, so when you, when you look, can you point to the main restaurant in the building then? So there's outdoor seating right there that wraps around, almost in the location it is today, it wraps. Almost all three sides, so on the on the side facing our pool is a little bit more. Private on that side or a little bit tucked in, and then we have all the way along the beach and then and then in the corner. And then where we were talking about earlier, kind of under the existing cottonwood is outdoor dining, so that can be. From our lakefront pavilion spilling back or from our restaurant that that that's in that prime corner spilling out. So we really want the indoor-outdoor. Experience right there. Yeah, maybe one more thing back there once. And and so this, we we updated this since we sent the first package, and so this one. When Darren was talking about where the twenty foot fire lane goes, so this more represents that midpoint of the building. And then we also updated and we took the cars out from under that tree, so part of what he was trying to explain, we we can help with this one just to get that to the right spot. So one thing, and we'll come back to it in a minute, but one thing on the on that fire lane, so we worked with the fire department and fire chief and. To come up with that distance. And that the fire truck could park on the end there and get to that middle piece of the E. In in our experience with sort of, and we we want this to be a multimodal path, we want bikes, we want pedestrians, we want. You know, public, we want people to be on the lawn still, we want people on that boardwalk. We're sort of. Fighting maybe back to not have it be twenty feet the whole way because it feels like a road and not like a pathway, so we're trying to. Neck it down as it gets towards the marina to be a little bit more intimate space and. On the next slide, we'll look at it, but we do have some seating pockets that tuck off of that, so those are public, people can sit on those benches. And use that space, but they can also sit on the lawn, we don't want to take too much of that lawn away and start to erode that. We want people to put their blankets back there if they don't want to be on the sand, we want people to be able to. Come on the hard path and sit on a bench and enjoy the beach and not just have to be on the sand. So we don't, this whole kind of strip of lawn and the and the hardscape, which I'll talk about in a second. We do see that as very public still and we we want people, people in hotels also want to be part of the local. Fabric, they want to mix with locals, so we don't want this to be a place where like kind of nobody comes but our guests, like we want that to be a blend. And that will make it more vibrant. And then this this image, you you also can see the, we have kind of an event plaza at the other tree, so the tree in the foreground is the other one that we're. Protecting and we have a plaza around that too that can host events, cocktail parties, it could host public events back, you know, back in that space. So that's kind of, and and then the trail kind of comes around that and connects over to the seasons, sort of in the way that it does today. So our ten foot right there. Becomes the ten foot and and the path that it is now, right, so it's going to narrow down eventually anyway when it turns into the. Path to get to the seasons, but we want the seasons residents to. Use this side of our property also as a walkway, we think it's a great amenity and great for walking a little bit safer than walking on Doc Street, so we. Embrace having them and anybody past us or at the marina to come past. Oh, one more thing on that one, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm skipping around. So also, from this image, you can see our roof deck, so we do have, in the bottom corner, we have the ball, like our ballroom that has. The seating that Brian talked about for two hundred and fifty seated at tables, but we also have this roof deck amenity that has two. Outdoor roof decks and then an indoor portion that's sort of in the black area that you see with that roof. So we have multiple spots that could host different events or different parties. And then we also have one that I'll talk about in a minute on the other side, so. At any one point, there could be different size events occurring at this hotel, not just one. So this, so we, this is our. Okay, well, the the shape of the E, yeah, this this is just kind of to list out. The the are the amenity, not just the amenities, but kind of everything that's here, so you'll see not the, some of these aren't just public, but also for the hotel guests, so for example, the. The pool, we have kind of a pool terrace that's raised up a little bit off of the lawn and that's. For hotel guests and then the next courtyard over is really an event plaza. So that that can be used for outdoor events, it spills in and out from our ballroom and our pre-function, so. We don't just have the the square footage we're talking about on our, just shy of fifteen thousand for event space, does it is for indoor space, but we also have these. Outdoor spaces that can be used all summer in the shoulder season. Maybe, and I can talk a little bit about that, so the service access, somebody asked about that, so I'll just hit that while this slide is on, but. So that we we do have trash and loading sort of tucked into the building. So that yard is just how we get into that, but the but the actual, you know, we have dumpsters and and compactors, but they're inside the building, not. Out in our yard. They're tucked under. So it was talked about a little bit and we have been working with staff on our twenty seven amenities, so we took a stab at that to try to. See if we had twenty seven amenities, so this is our key plan and really just to. Note, I mean, and I don't even know if we noted all of them because we didn't talk about the bike path, which is sort of not on our property, but the it's it's pretty rich with. Public use, the whole lakeside of our property, so having that really be open to the public, feel like. open to the public, feel like people can still use that as a space. It's not, it's not kind of off limits from this point on. And then also our roof deck and our, our amenities that are on top can also be open for people to use. Oh, wait, one more thing on there. So we do have the, the little red asterisk. We do want to really make a big deal about the trailhead that's here. We know that's important to the, to the city. We also know it's, it's really important that we're part of that trail and we want to continue that and really make that a statement. So that might be a piece of public art. We'd love to work with the city to figure out what is the best way to sort of have a marker there. It's not already developed in our minds, but we'd love that. And then we also see that along this experience, there is some public art along with the benches or fire pits or, you know, grass areas that people can sit. Okay, a little bit about access. And so we've been talking about that multimodal path. So the yellow dash lines are, we, we would consider those multimodal, but heavy emphasis on pedestrian traffic. Not that you couldn't use your bike, but the green line then is what we understand as the, like a true bike lane along Doc Street. And the red then is on this, on this diagram is where our autos go. So you come in off of Bridge Street, kind of curl around there, you tuck under the garage. So one of the things a little bit earlier, there was some discussion about whether we're creating more traffic or less traffic on, on Doc Street. So one of our strategies was we're bringing our guests in off of Bridge under our porcupine share, and then they're tucking into our garage. So we have two levels of garage that they're going into without ever hitting Doc Street. So today, you turn into our parking lot and you kind of drive through the parking lot to get to the seasons even like everybody's on Doc Street, you're backing in and out of it. We're trying to intentionally sort of get the guests off of there and tuck them into the garage. So and then we do, because of how our grades work, that there is a red line that goes up Doc Street. So we have the second, the, the second level of parking garage right there, which is also the fire access we were talking about. That's accessed off of Doc Street, but our main parking entry with most of our guests is coming in, not even touching Doc Street. So we actually, I think in one of our strategies, it was we're thinking we're improving the amount of traffic on Doc Street because we don't have people backing out right onto that traffic anymore, like backing towards that bike lane and sort of organizing that a little bit better. Oh, and one more thing on that. Sorry, Charlie. And one more thing, and there, and we did see the comment, which was a good comment about the pedestrian along Bridge Street. So we have the dash line that sort of has that, what we, what we talked about earlier is the five-foot sidewalk. I think one reason, reason we had the five-foot sidewalk is without getting the variance, we would have a zero setback. So we were trying to push our entry canopy like right up to the property line, right? Which, which makes that a five-foot sidewalk. So in our, in our scenario, we do want more pedestrians around there, but the pedestrians could flow back on the other side of our, of the red line there. Like they can be back by our entryway and come across, not just using the five-foot sidewalk. So like we're a, you know, an open hotel, we have a hotel lobby, a bar, a market, restaurants, like we don't mind the pedestrians being around that tree or coming on the, on the hotel entry side of that sidewalk. Or using, you know, and the five-foot sidewalk. But that's one reason that squished a little bit because we were trying to originally get the canopy as far down as we could to that kind of lot line. There was a little bit talk early, which I don't know if is a big deal anymore, but could we stage this? Where, where would that be? How would we, would, would that affect the park? Would that affect other, other lots around us? So this is obviously not necessarily like, we'd have to check this with contractors, but in our experience, we can stage a lot of what's going to be constructed on our, on our raised parking area, which is about 64 feet wide on that yellow swath you see. Well, we're building the vertical part of the tower and then we could back ourselves out of that. So while most of the building is being built, we think we can sort of stage on our own site without having it on everybody else. We'd like to keep the path open on the beachside. This is talking a little bit about the fire access. So a couple of things. One is we, we see often in resort communities that we have sprinkler buildings, the buildings help fight the fire, right? So our, the best thing about sprinklers is to get the occupants of the building out without necessarily the fire truck having to come and like ladder everybody out of the building. We did work with the fire department about the access they would need on the, on the east side and the west side. So the, we, we do have the access to that midpoint there that we talked about. Yeah, right there. And then, and that's where we, after that access point where they wanted to get to a certain point. And after that is when we narrowed the, the promenade. And then and, or the boardwalk. And then the access on top of the lid of our garage would be on the, on that, yeah, right there. So they did agree that they could come in there and back, back out. We also have stand pipes in the building. We have sprinklers. There's hydrants on site. A little bit about snow storage. One nice thing about more modern architecture and resorts is that we're starting to use flat roofs more and flat roofs help hold the snow. So we have less snow dump going on to our amenities and the pools or pedestrians or parking. So you can see on here where we have flat roofs where we're actually holding our own snow. We do, we can maintenance the snow and get it off the, the boardwalk and store that on our own lawn. Our understanding is right now, when Doc Street is plowed, the snow storage is in that bike path lane. So they use the, like it's about five and a half feet. We went out there and measured it to the white line. And so that, that is being used right now for snow storage. So it's a little bit hard if that were to be curb and gutter. When we were talking about that a while ago, so having it painted is a little bit easier because then in the winter, when there's not as much bike traffic, it could still be used for snow storage. But we do resort communities, we usually use a snow consultant to help us with roof, snow clips, no fences, no heat, no melt. All of that, we, we want to protect occupants of the building and everybody around it. So that's a big deal. And maintain great sidewalks. A couple of quick images here. The left image is the view from Oak Street and First. So that's looking at the building with the current height. So just to show sort of what that view would be, and we didn't want to impede views of the mountains to the, to, you know, over the lake. So that's our building as it would be in the current height from that view. And then the, the right side picture is the seasons and us. So we're actually like a little bit depressed in a little bit of a hole. So we, we won't be taller than the seasons. And so that kind of gives the comparison and somebody asked that earlier. So we didn't know you were going to ask that, but there's there's a image. And then the top section is just what, what the view is, like if you're downtown, sort of looking over the hotel. There's a lot of gray change and stuff in between. There's a train in between. There's hills. Okay, this, this slide is really one of the, it's, it's the best way we could think of to show why we're asking for the variance that we're asking for. So if we were to build to the zero lot line per the zoning code, it would be the left-hand image, right? So the big kind of white ghosty box is the massing, the 50% of the massing being on the property line was zero setback, which was talked about before is great for like a main street kind of environment, but didn't feel right for this kind of more park-like environment with trying to preserve the views as you come out from under the bridge and really addressing a more pedestrian scale and of the park across the street. So the right side is our, our canopy. We want to keep the views through there to the lake. You can see the lakefront pavilion in the back. That's the tree that we're trying to preserve there. And, you know, trying to just move the mass back a little bit and not have that be so big on the front. So this is really why we're asking for that. A little bit tighter view. With that same. Okay, a little bit on parking. Well, a couple of things on this one. So first on parking. So we, so we did, yeah, we did show where these valets are and, um, in our valet count, and, and Brian can come up in a minute and talk about how they would operate this, but I just wanted to point out on this one. So we counted this as 20 valet stalls, but really the first 10 you could probably self-park in. And in our experience, that we, we do this kind of valet a lot in resort communities. The, in some of the seasons, the parking isn't full. In other seasons, like it's totally full, right? Or just certain, you know, Fourth of July weekend here, it's probably full. And in President's Day weekend in the mountains, it's probably full. So usually the operator and Brian can talk to it can modify that. So when you're in valet mode, nobody's self-parking on these levels and the valet can really manipulate the cars, which is what allows us to narrow the drive aisle down because you don't have two people that are unfamiliar with the parking ramp sort of going in two directions at the same time. Like it's really, you know, there's a valet down there getting a car or two out at, and so that necking that down hasn't been an issue in most resort communities because it allows us not to build so much and overbuild for Easter Sunday and then, and then have it be empty the rest. So that's one thing. And then when it's in, if, if it goes into self-park mode, then you just don't use those valet stalls, right? So those are only when it's in valet mood. We, we would be able to then park the, the, at least first row of those tandems, like probably wouldn't double tandem anybody if you were self-parking. But it allows it to sort of flex with the needs. And we did, we took the, we worked with staff and we took the tandems or the valet off of the top deck for fire department access. And left those off. Uh, one more thing on that bottom plan once. And while we're on this plan too, so the red, oh, do you want to talk about? Where'd you go? Yeah. Do you want to talk about?
If there's any questions on valet parking, you could answer now or, or later, whatever works for everyone. But thank you. We, we would anticipate the parking structure that could operate as a self-parking program or valet can go back and forth easily. We are very experienced with operating valet programs day in, day out in a resort property as well as operating valet with thousands of people and events too. So have a great understanding of it and, and how it works and how to, how to make it function. I, I find with all the places that we have, that it's although code says one space per hotel guest room, my practical experience is that it's about point seven to one hotel room is the practical side of it. And some of the reasons behind that, which will, which will play out here is that we provide airport pickup, we provide transportation to and from the ski resort. So guests will rely on the hotel shuttle service to get them to and from the property and take them to the amenities that they, that they have, that they're planning on coming in and enjoying in the community. We do have a variety of suite hotel rooms, which was brought up a little bit earlier. A suite in my mind, it can include multiple bedrooms, but in our case, in a traditional hotel, it's less about two bedrooms and more about the size of the room. So a traditional hotel room might be 500 square feet or a suite might be 750 or 800 square feet. And it comes with a better seating area or a larger this or that inside the room. So it's just better space inside the room. Also, just a kind of a practical example is that there's often families that will come. It could be a five-person family or a six-person family. They all, of course, come in one car with kids, but they can't sleep in a room with two queen beds with that many kids. With kids, I can only sleep with so many in the bed. But they, so they'll rent two rooms and it might be an adjoining room. But that beats one car for two rooms in essence. But valet programs, we, when, when you operate in valet, of course, you have the keys for every car. Every parking space is numbered and you park cars in specific spaces. You can access those cars 24 hours a day through hotel staff. And so, and use a ticketing system to track and manage all that. It's a, it's a simplistic program, but it's highly effective. And then I think we, someone asked about the restaurant too. The restaurant would be open to the public. Public restaurant guests, of course, would be able to use the valet program. I think it's a wonderful service is what I find more than, more than anything. And just generally hotels, it's a higher level service to offer a valet program. Let's, you see it pretty frequently.
And we accounted for it in event space too.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think you touched on it, but the question that I have is usually my experience with valet parking is in a full parking lot is generally during big events. Correct? You don't experience a full parking lot. You don't anticipate, or at least I don't anyway, logically speaking, anticipate all these spaces being filled out on a day-to-day normal, average hotel stay type of use, but only during big events. Am I wrong to surmise that?
That's correct.
So we're not talking daily.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Was it?
Is this the time when we start asking questions?
Is there more to your presentation or are we done?
We have a couple more slides, but we don't mind. Questions, yeah, during the presentation either. That might be just as easy.
Oh, it's, if you want to go up to some, up above with the top-down plat view where it shows, no, huh, up, up above like in the, you know, like the community, yeah, right here, there's a good one. I can't believe these are shadows are adjusted for North Idaho. That pool is gonna be in the shade at 11 o'clock every day at best.
Could be.
I mean, it's a lot. It's, it's, it's sort of a a big deal. I, I got a bunch of other questions. I'll, I'll.
They're hot pools though, hot pools.
I'm glad I'm not paying the heating bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have more on that one? Or anything else on parking while we're still on? Yeah, I should have said that at the beginning because I don't mind being interrupted or with questions like that. Super great. So one thing on this one, so the red, which I think I just talked about, but the red does represent lobby, lobby bar. You know, a little coffee market, the, the restaurant, which as we talked about is open to the public, the lake pavilion down there in the corner. The sort of sea green color or at the top is the, the main ballroom pre-function and then spills out onto that courtyard. So I just wanted to sort of point those out on this level. Those are very public, the ballrooms, what we're envisioning on this and what we've designed is that it's all windows on the lakeside. So we, it's also, it's a trend right now, but very hard to find like great event space that also has a view. And there's like, there's amazing views from this property. So we want to take advantage of those for really good event space. So that, and then the courtyard up to the north with the tree spills out from that also. So that's great, you know, nighttime event space. And then we'll go up a couple of levels in a minute. And yeah, so on this floor, on level four and level five, you can see the sort of, yeah, that green color on both. So those are sort of boardroom, private dining, also event spaces. So they're small and big spaces that could be used for a HOA meeting or a nonprofit board meeting or somebody's wedding, right? So we want to kind of accommodate different sizes. And then the top over there on level five is the two outdoor roof decks with the indoor space in the middle. So one thing we loved about when we stood on that site is you don't have a bad view on that site from like any direction, except like maybe down where the parking is, where you're just looking at the train, train tracks. But once you get up to level five, you're really, I mean, you're looking across the lake or you're looking back at the city views or even this one on the corner has really cool views looking down that way. So it's, it's not bad, no matter where you are. And we liked this bottom corner is sort of when you come under the bridge or from the park. It's sort of a beacon, lights can be on, it's, it's makes vibrancy of that corner too. We really want that to be a welcoming side of the building. And then we do have that little red up there on level four also that has a roof deck. So that's also a little kind of roof bar. So a lot of little spots that can be used for great events. So a lot of little spots that can be used for great events of multiple different sizes. Um, we thought this was helpful and I I actually think Darren did a really good job of trying to explain our parking because it's it's complicated and how the how all the levels work. But we do come in at level one from um like on grade. And then we drop down, so we do have parking under the building, like under the main, the tall part of the building, and then we have that raised parking deck. So off of, off to the left is Dock Street, right? So we do have that kind of wall and it depends where you are on there, how tall that is. But somebody asked a question about the height and um in in to, we have, we have more than fifty percent of below grade parking, which did allow the height to go up to sixty-five. So this helped us figure that out um in our heads. And then you can also see court sort of like our pool decks here and how it like, we do want to sort of address our pools going down to be sort of indoor, outdoor and engaging with the lawn and the beach. And the views are really important. I'll bring uh Will up here with me to talk about the conditions too.
Yep, uh, Will McDonald, I'm the, on the development team here. And um, these, they were just a couple of the approvals that we wanted you guys to reconsider. The first one is being conditions two and three. The biggest thing here is we've probably been working on this with the redesign probably for about twelve months. And specifically, we probably spent close to a million dollars just on design work. We foresee this number, once if approved um through this process, um, probably design taking about twelve months. And then the bid process taking another four to six months. So there's going to be a lot of design work, bidding work to actually get this out of the ground. So what we're asking of you guys is some flexibility in this process. And so, you know, understand that Darren was pegging this to the demo permit, but we would like something a little bit more, as I already said, uh flexible. So we would like you guys to consider the uh, the verbiage that we have up there. Becky did a really good job, uh, as we've also spoken to this, condition five, just about the impervious surfaces on that fire lane. And Becky can go into it in detail if you want, but we're thinking some sort of grass surface that is got the structural integrity that can handle a fire truck, fire apparatus, that then again brings in that green space and you're not looking at twenty feet of concrete. It just is kind of an eyesore. That goes into condition five B. And that is, you know, again, um, staying in line with the existing north of that fire terminus. Again, we've spoken to that a lot. Final condition is seven is what Becky's also spoken to is because of the garage and how we channel traffic around. We don't necessarily see the need to go to six feet, we'd like to keep it at five feet. One little item that's not spoken or addressed in this is the Alta survey. We spent a lot of work working with Dan Provol, uh, and he was the one who could did or performed the Alta survey. And we even worked with the city and nobody could actually show where the city owned the land underneath Bridge Street. And we fully intend to quick claim the property to the city uh upon approval and prior to um building permits being issued. So we're one hundred percent on board there as well as right of way uh on Dock Street. Because we see the need that that street services, services, the seasons and what have you. So, thank you.
One more thing on condition five that, and Will mentioned this, but what we specifically were thinking is we, we're fine not having an asphalt surface and and somebody brought that up, like we just don't want it to be asphalt and we don't either. That's not very good place making um in our minds. But if it could, if in the concrete, especially twenty feet, even if it's halfway, just feels very, very street like. So um if we could use a mixture or have the ability to use um pavers or a concrete or a mixture of both or some grasscrete, um, if that makes sense on some of it, so we can still drive on it, but it just feels a little softer or feels a little more imperious than just a lot of concrete. So, but we're fine not having it be asphalt.
Thank you for your presentation, very thorough. Uh, and before, well, you may sit down if you like, but uh commissioners, well, yes, we'll ask questions to any of the applicants.
Depends who you want to ask, so I'll say.
Direct them generally to the DIAS and we'll see.
I always have questions.
Of course you do.
But I'll let somebody else go first.
Well, if you're ready to go, go.
Okay, nobody else, Will, um, what is the width for the uh drive aisles in the parking lots? Twenty-three, twenty-three? Brian, you had mentioned that you offer staff housing in your other facilities. Do you plan to do the same thing here?
Yes, uh, good, good question on both sides. We, that's not something that we've worked on to date in just to order the development uh process. But I would anticipate that based on the community staffing, based on the community housing and what we've done in the past. We find it to be very successful. I just think that's going to come through years from now.
And what are the examples that you've done?
We uh, we built housing, we bought housing, um, and um, we uh, we offer it to all of our staff. So community members um can stay there, managers stay there, seasonal workers stay there, interns uh alike. But it's about a third of our staff right now do it. And I find it, it's only, it's very critical. In a community this size with a staffing this size, I find it to be uh pretty critical.
And are those offered at, um, you know, workhouse, you know, workforce housing is a big thing. It's a big issue here, especially with the costs of of everything going up and rents for those service workers. Do you keep, the examples that you have provided, um, do you keep those uh rents lower or is it at the competitive market?
Oh, it's, it's much lower. It's a ben, it's a benefit of employment for sure, yeah. It it's a, I mean, from a business standpoint, it's a cost to the business, but there is a a charge for it, but it's um, it's maybe, quote me exactly, but it may be two hundred and fifty dollars. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty minimal, yeah.
And then I would be remiss to ask, I don't know who could answer this question, but geese is a hot topic here and and on our lawns and everybody knows that that's a big interest of mine. With the grass that you do have on site, what is your plan or do you have one? Have you discussed one? I'm sure you've been told um about goose poop mitigation.
Yeah, well, we, um, I am ve- very familiar, yes. And um, we, maybe a couple of things in uh one of our hotels, um, geese are a natural, natural. They're on the lawn, they're right there. I find the guests kind of enjoy looking at them. And one of them that comes to mind is right in our wedding uh site. And so we pick up goose poop on a daily basis.
Okay.
But I would, I will, uh, I and.
So there won't be any trapping of geese? You will, you will let them do their thing?
Yes, no. I have a question just in that critical decision-making process, but I was curious from your description, would, uh, when you're looking at staging the building of this and that might affect the overall timing, was the intent that that parking structure will be built first?
No. Well, in in our stage, you're talking about our our plan right here that we were talking about.
Correct.
So in this, in in our idea on this, and obviously it'd be good to have, when we get a GC totally on board, they can vet this or not. But what we were thinking by this is the part, that yellow piece is built last, so that we can use that for lay down, build the vertical first. And then we, because that would be precast, so then we can build that as we come out, which is a little bit easier. And by then the contractor could be under the building with some of the staging. That was the idea. A building like this would have a couple of cranes poking out of it, things like that to lift, so we need somewhere to lift from.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
I don't know anything about the hospitality industry nor hotels, but if you, if you think about, let's say, in October, what does October look like for your hotel? Like, what's vacancy, like in October, November? What what's going on in the tiki bar in November?
Well, it uh, it is, it's probably closed.
Yeah, 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 it's gonna be shuttered seven months out of the year, probably.
Yeah, and highly.
There's probably a little bit of an opportunity to preserve a little bit of green space there, if nothing else.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, 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 because it's, it's, it's literally, and this is one man's opinion, it's not gonna see a lot of use seven months out of the year.
Very true, yeah.
I have more questions. So and and it, in our experience too, like it can, I mean, we can heat out there or have like covered patios where.
Little events in the, you know.
You could, we could, yeah, seasonally, or we couldn't, um, it's, it's probably not all closed in, but if the bar is small enough in there, but there's overhangs, you know, then we can at least put some radiant heat from that. So in the, at least in the, when it gets a little bit cooler at night or September, October, we could still have people out there, right? So.
Is it, is it enclosed or was it just?
It's like partially enclosed. Yeah, I mean, our, what, we haven't totally figured that out yet, but our vision of it was that it's part, like, there's a bar out there and partially enclosed, so you could make brick oven pizzas or chicken nuggets. Yeah.
Commissioner Remar?
Ah, yes, um, mitigation for runoff, meaning seat criteria and everything else. I mean, is it just going to be some fencing or do you have something better designed to correct? Because I mean, literally, you're right going into the lake and especially during the winter months, it'll just run out there on the flats, but.
Yeah, so we have, yeah, Jennifer, are you on there still? It's been long.
I am. Can you hear me all right?
Our civil engineering, so she can, hopefully she could answer that. Could you hear his question?
I do want to clarify, is that during construction or during um permanent conditions?
Well, during construction runoff.
Okay, um, so I think obviously this is a piece that we definitely want to work with the GC on to make sure that there's a robust system, given its proximity to the lake. Uh, silk fence is a great option, but it's not a, it's not the robust option to to deal with what's happening here. Would want to be doing interceptor swales as well as um sediment traps and whatnot, and then pumping sumps, most likely sedimentation tanks as well to help deal with the um sedimentation that might be um mobilized during construction with runoff. Does that help clarify?
Uh, yeah, I'll keep an eye on it.
And and one.
Sounds good.
One thing that came up before, but we did, we we do really like the idea of some kind of um more impervious that that's still walkable or the fire truck could drive on, but some impervious along there just to let that kind of filter through on the path and not just run over the path. So we do really like that idea too and would be happy to work with the city in any way to um be creative about that.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Torby.
This covers a number of different subjects and I'll beat a horse that's not yet dead uh about fire suppression and fire flow, needed fire flow. You have your civil engineer on call. Given the, and I don't know what it is, but given the type of construction in the international fire code that the city has adopted, do you, do you know what the needed fire flow is for this building?
We'll be working, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jennifer, yeah.
I was just gonna say, we'll be working with the mechanical designers on that to make sure that we get the right numbers in place and then working with the city to evaluate the existing system's capacity. So it'll be a dual purpose approach to making sure that what is the need? Is it sufficient? And then how can the system supply it? All of that'll be worked with the city through the building permit process and approval system is how we're anticipating this.
Great, so it sounds like that will be um identified and defined uh before the issuance of a building permit, correct?
Yes, we would expect that.
And many buildings this size, we have a fire pump or thing, so we do have to do that analysis to ma- we need to locate that and know that it can reach the top of the building and so we're.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about, you know, the water from the water treatment plant's got to go through downtown and come right around a single pipe over Bridge Street through a six inch section and then go back up the road again.
And that would be critical to us too, so we would also be worried about that.
Yeah, there's no loop, there's no loop or anything there, so that's one thing, okay.
Under, I I understand the question, yeah, it's a good question.
Okay, um, and then uh just real different subject now, uh, lighting? We have a dark skies thing that we've got going here. Could you make some comment about how you're considering or addressing our, the city's interest in preserving the night sky?
So I probably have not worked in a resort in fifteen years that would let us do anything but dark sky. So um, for me, dark sky, I mean, we don't want to see bulbs and we want to have romantic lighting on the building, but enough lighting, we we work really hard with, we have a lighting designer on the team, but we want to have enough foot candles to see the path, but you don't, we don't want to see a whole bunch of bulbs. So that's super important to us too, especially to create the right environment for the, I mean, we want a sexy resort here. We don't want, you know.
I think you you've answered my question. Um, I'm going back to, you had your own sort of list of conditions and I think it was condition five B. You wanted a ten foot wide sidewalk on the east side of the building. And I remember Darren saying that his, there it is right there, uh, Darren suggesting that that, in his opinion, should be, am I right Darren, that that should be no less than twelve feet?
Can you just go to the elevation ones? Yeah, so what we're talking about, which maybe needs clarification in our, but we're talking about the ten foot sidewalk that is, go to the next one, like the one that looks at it from the other way. We're talking about that section from the midpoint um to the seasons, that would be ten feet, only not the whole lane, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Agree, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Darren, what, weren't you thinking that that should be at least twelve feet, based on your professional experience and judgment?
I was, Commissioner, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then maybe it's for both of, I guess maybe it's for Darren, but uh, I understand that based on our um code requirements, that this development requires two hundred and forty parking spaces, period. I mean, that there's been a calculation of that. And does that take into account the unique aspects of this thing where there are ballrooms and uh meeting rooms and uh public restaurants and, I mean, all kinds of things that might bring people other than staying in the hotel there?
Yeah, super good question, actually.
I mean, is it all lumped in there and that's where you get two hundred and forty or what? I, I don't know.
I, I love your question and actually I was gonna talk about that earlier, so I'm glad you brought it back up. But um, when we were talking about guest room keys, so we have a hundred and eighty-one guest rooms and a hundred and eighty-one parking stalls for those guest rooms, but we also have sixteen stalls allocated for food and beverage and twenty-four for event space and eighteen for the event roof and one for outdoor. So the calculation for parking takes in more than just one for one. And so the two forty takes into account the food and beverage and the event um space with that calculation.
Might clarify as well, but a lot, oftentimes, uh, the hotel guests that are staying at the hotel are the ones that are using the meeting space and event space. So it's not a, it's not addition, that's part of it.
Okay, and how about employees too? I guess I just didn't see anything about employees, so where do they park?
Uh, in in a variety of places, I think the code considers employees when the overall. But in addition to that, we encourage uh ride share programs, uh bike to work programs. I think the local community has the spot bus, uh, that people can park and ride. All those type of things come into play and we're familiar with that and would anticipate doing it too.
You probably said it, but I forgot, how many employees do you expect on a peak basis?
Well, uh, three hundred in totality, but let me, but I should want to clarify that um hotels operate twenty-four hours a day. And so it's per shift that, you know, there's just, there's not three hundred uh employees at any given time and that's spread out seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
A couple of questions about the packet that I read that you guys admitted. You had roof and courtyard materials um anticipating to be non pollution generating. Can you give me some examples of what you use, like a slate or what is it that you're thinking about?
Yeah, so we, we're pretty adamant on any materials we use not being pollution generating. So um, if if we're using flat roof, we have had ballast roof, we've had metal roof, but we want to use materials that are rated sustainable, um, not generating more carbon footprint.
And then I noticed that your east side um sidewalk has a snow melt system, so heated sidewalks. Is that what that implies?
Um, we, we have anticipated we would snow melt the fire lane at minimum. We could continue that for the ten feet that we're proposing to, but we, because we would like that to be a sidewalk all year to, as a connector. But we do need to maintain the fire lane and make sure that's um always accessible. Um, but we do need to maintain the fire lane and make sure that's, um, always accessible. That was it for.
Commissioners, any more questions for the applicant before we begin a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Dunkle.
In regard to the fire access with ladder truck on the north end of the property, can you help me find how how the truck gets, the truck can't get on the 10 foot sidewalk, right?
Right.
So how does it reach the top?
So they're not, right now, that the, the fire truck has asked to, the fire department has asked to come on the east side or the west side of the property on the parking deck to be able to access the roof or that tower, you know, that part of the E. Um, they've been okay with that they're going to walk by foot around, um, from the, from the east side where the T is right there. Um, up to where it connects onto the, um, back onto Dock Street and by the marina. So that I don't think that there is an anticipation that they're going to drive on the 10 foot part or that they're going to ladder the beach side of that, that piece of the building. There's a, there's a pretty big slope right there from like up on the marina down, so it's kind of like a big hole there. So you couldn't just, you couldn't drive the truck up there. Anyway, it's pretty prohibitive grade wise to be able to get up there.
So if there's a fire on the water side of the top E part, we're just going to leave it alone?
No, then they're, the, well, in our conversations with them, they're bringing the truck into where the T is. And then their hoses, um, the, the reason they wanted that point is their hoses can reach from the point up on, right off a dock street by the service and that point, and their hoses can reach. So they wanted to be close enough that the hoses could get to the edge of the building. But ideally, what, I mean, we're a, we're a building that's going to fight its own fire, so we have protected stairwells and fire sprinklers and automated alarms, so we're going to get the people evacuated with, ideally without having any ladders to get them out, because they're going to be in a safe path of egress to get out of the building.
Okay. Yeah, I have concerns about the number of employees and and also patrons in the restaurant that's open to the public and other shops and so forth. And I, I understand the valet parking. If I go somewhere and they have valet parking, I'm using it because it's way easier and it's a, it's a nice benefit. But it's usually not free. And usually tip. So the typical employee or patron might not use that. So that is anticipated that it's like free?
Y- yes, so the.
I'm not trying to like ruin your business plan.
No, 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 I, 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 I hear you. Um, uh, um, today, the valet program that, that, that we do today, if you're coming as a restaurant guest, the valet is complimentary. Um, there is generally the expectation of a tip, but it's not required. Um, uh, but they're, you know, pretty inexpensive tip and, and it's a service component, so find that most people don't have a problem with tipping and they prefer it, as you said, I think they just generally prefer it. It's, it's nice, convenient and, uh, um, whatnot, so.
So to piggyback off that, would you be open to offsite parking? That would also be valet?
Offsite meaning?
Offsite valet parking?
Oh, I would be open to it, yes, if I understand what you're saying. Um, and we would, uh, also, um, I know the community uses the park, uh, frequently for events. I would fully anticipate that we could open up our parking to those, uh, community events that were happening in the park. Um, absolutely.
Um, the area around the tree in the front, is that a pervious or impervious surface?
Uh, that's a good question, and we haven't totally figured that out yet. The more impervious we could make it, but still feel like you could put tables and chairs and seat, sit out there, the, the happier we would be.
Opinion? If you put a impervious surface over tree roots, it's going to be a problem for the tree. And if you're into protecting that tree, which another one of my opinions is, I would cut it down because it's a cottonwood. Yeah. And I think you'll, I mean, I, I don't have any problem with trees. I love trees, but I don't love that tree.
Yeah, we, we would want to work with.
Yeah, I, I think.
Rendering looks a lot better than the real tree.
I agree. I think, um, the pervious surface is, is really cool. So it helps with a lot of things like other commissioners have said, uh, as far as you know, stormwater, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, and there's a tree on the other end of the property too. It actually looks like that and maybe is a pervious surface.
Yeah, and I probably said it wrong. So in, on here, we're showing a mixture, right? We're showing kind of like crusher finds around the tree, so that's a little bit, that is pervious and then like pavers that also can let the water filter through and have a sand base, so we can do both. Um, one thing we like about pavers on the, on the multimodal path too, is that that allows the water to go through, but we could also snowmelt that underneath because we can put sand in.
So, uh, another point is, uh, is grass is a good filter as well.
Love grass, yeah.
You know, it's pretty good, um.
And we'd love to keep the lawn, um, on the side, so lo- love that too.
Had a bunch more questions, but a lot of the others, uh, I've already asked those. Um, just another one on the offs, uh, amenities. I guess we need definition of what amenities are in the code. Can you help?
So the, and the list we provided on here, um, we have open to public use, right? So it's not guest only, these are open to public use.
I can see, I'll make a, a list of 27 would be difficult, so you've been inventive with it.
A little bit, but also like 2,500 square feet of path, we, that could be a, a few amenities if we wanted, right? So. So, I mean, we do have quite a few little nooks and, um, fire tables and bocce, um, paddleboard rental. Um, we want to engage the beach with our guests, but also invite the beach guests to engage.
Okay, I think that's more on our end as far as, you know, what it should actually be, you know, so.
That'd be, that'd be good.
Well.
Were you? Yeah, I'm done.
One thing I might piggyback on that is that we, and also the public comment we're about to receive may have some ideas as the kinds of amenities that we would all like to see listed. And that doesn't mean they'll have to do them all, but it does mean there'd be things they can consider when they're looking at final plans.
Well, so, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I might recommend that we sort of get to it, because this is the most attendance I've ever seen in a Sandpoint planning and zoning meeting at quarter after eight, so. Yeah. Yeah. If that sounds reasonable.
It, it's reasonable to me. Is it reasonable to all the commissioners? And we'll come back and then you folks are all.
One quick question though, are we allowed to come back to the well question wise in terms of staff?
We'll come, I think we'll come back to the question, city staff, but, but not applicants at that point, but applicants can have rebuttal to public testimony.
All right. Understood, thank you.
So we will take a five minute recess, um, and hopefully there's plenty of public amenities here. Yes, we could take our seats, we'll get started then with the public hearing. And if you're planning and testifying and haven't filled out a form, be sure to make your way back there and fill one out and bring it up to the city clerk. And so the public hearing is now open. And I will begin with those who want to testify in favor. And, and just so you know, we're kind of both the conditional use permit and the variance. We will be voting on them separately, but we are discussing them together, so. So are there anyone here who would like to, uh, testify in favor, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sherry Manning.
My name is Sherry Manning and my husband and I live at the Seasons. In addition, our family has purchased several other units at the Seasons, so our investment in the neighborhood is, um, not small. Um, I want to speak in support of the project from the Avril family. I really like the rectilinear, more modern architecture. It has significant character and strength. It integrates with the Sandpoint development very well. It uplifts the entire neighborhood. I'm impressed with the Avril family, their successful hospitality legacy in Montana. I think they will be successful partners here. I'm especially pleased with the size and plans for the conference center and compu- and community events. We don't have enough of those. The ones we have here are, cannot support some of our businesses, so this will be a welcome addition. I want to thank the commissioners and the planner for all of their thoughtful questions and consideration, especially with regard to water. I would urge the approval of the commissioners for both of these um, issues and with alacrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, others in favor?
Barbara E. Critt.
Yes, I'm Barbara E. Critt. I am, uh, also an owner, uh, and resident of the Seasons at Sandpoint, uh, and have been for seven years. And a longtime resident of Sandpoint. Um, I heartily, um, support this project. I think it's very well designed, very well done, and would be a major asset for our community. I think that they have done a excellent job of integrating the needs, um, of our community uh, and absorbing the, the culture of the community as a walking and a bicycling town. And, uh, opening up the public spaces in, at the beach side for the public to be able to use. And the Avril family, um, is very well known for first-class developments. Um, I've had personal experience in many of them through Montana, in Whitefish and Flathead Lake and in Missoula. And, um, I feel that we're very, very fortunate to have them as the developer of this new property, so I'm 100% in support of it.
Thank you.
David E. Critt.
My name's, uh, Dave E. Critt. I belong to Barbara E. Critt. Uh, I live next door to this project. I'm in wholehearted support of it. I'm a long-term resident. I've been here 45 years as a taxpayer. I've also, I'm a land use economist. In 1980, I was one of the principals in doing the downtown revitalization study. I can tell you, this is an inflection point in my mind at Sandpoint. It will anchor the community. It'll be a jewel to the park. I was going to talk in detail about economic impacts, but I'll abbreviate that. But specifically say that we're going to have a perpetual annuity from property taxes on this project of $500,000 to $600,000 per year plus approximately $2.5 million per year accruing to the city through the resort city tax. This is major, very important. I would add to that, that the Seasons next door throws another $800,000 per year in property tax. So we have an agglomeration of major economic impact entities right in one spot. Uh, a couple of comments. The hotel itself, we, as, as it exists, as most of you know on a marketplace, uh, we have a tourist component. We also have the business commercial component. That's two legs of a three-legged stool. A third leg is conferencing. That's a major economic impact also. So all of these things that, to gather are, uh, a very pos- positive culmination for the community. And look forward to your decision tonight. And hopefully you can make that, you know, and, and I appreciate all of the details that everyone's put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Austin Klein.
Well, I don't know anything about construction, but I know where I've been in the past and I knew the freeway was no damn good. Now I wonder what I was thinking there. And I didn't like what was going on at Memorial Field and the grass there. Now I wonder what the hell was I thinking? I realized the people when, in Paris, when the Eiffel Tower went up, they hated it. Half of them wanted to tear it down after the World Fair. They didn't like the, uh, the Opera House in, in Sydney either, when that went up. They wanted to, never, now, now it's their, my main tourist attraction and I want to say I'm 100% for this and some of us just have the wrong gut reaction sometimes. And I look back on myself and I wonder what I was thinking when I was younger about some of these things. So I hope we pass it tonight and we don't kick the can down the road. I think we have a great company that wants to do great things here and if it's done, great things in other places. I want to say one last thing. I don't know all of the people that are involved in this, but I know Heather Upton. And I know Heather Upton has been involved with this thing for, uh, over two years and no one cares more about the historic preservation of Sandpoint than Heather Upton. And I want to say if Heather Upton is for this project, it's got to be good for the ambiance of Sandpoint. Thank you.
Stacy Mueller.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Stacy Mueller and I am the general manager of the Cedar Street Bridge. So I kind of oversee 22 businesses now, 25 in August. That is a lot of business that we bring downtown. All of the businesses downtown, um, it is, uh, a wonderful thing when all these businesses are thriving and I feel like that it really adds to, um, our, you know, appeal for people to come and be tourists and visit our area. I see this, um, uh, hotel adding to that. Um, and helping actually even our tenants in the Cedar Street Bridge. So I am totally in favor of this. However, I do see one issue that probably needs to be addressed because my tenants themselves and their employees have a lot of difficulty with issues with parking themselves. We don't want our employees parking on First Street. It takes away from the revenues from all the businesses. We ask all our employees to park, you know, far away, um, and walk into the bridge. So I do see that we're going to have some, uh, parking issues with what has been presented here tonight. However, there is shuttle. We can, you know, start instituting, um, some form of shuttle service probably, um, that they could partner with the city and provide that for their employees for sure. Um, so that would be the only negative, but other than that, I think this is going to be a win-win for Sandpoint. Help the downtown business and help our economy.
Thank you.
Elani Williams.
Good evening. I'm sure you guys are all tired. Um, I am the executive director for the Downtown Shopping District Business Association. And I too am, um, involved in 35 different businesses, two nonprofits. We did a lot of research with the Avril, um, company, just coming to their meetings, trying to find out what they're going to be doing for our community. And we're all very excited. Um, I do have to concur with Stacy about the parking. And if the city was able to do their parking structure and be able to do some kind of, um, back and forth bus, busing for the different businesses, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Meekings.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sherry Meekings and I am a local business owner. I own Carousel Emporium and Sandpoint Toys, and I've been in business for 15 years. I love our downtown and, um, I absolutely love what has been proposed here tonight as well. I, um, I love the attention to detail that this group has proposed. Um, I just feel like they've, they've really done their research and taken everything into heart that I, I'm pretty sure we've all seen over the years, um, just with all of the, um, shoot, I can't remember the name, the consultants. Remember all the consultant meetings that we had over the years? I feel like everything that was mentioned in those consultant meetings has been addressed through this, um, through Avril. So um, I just love the attention to, to every piece of detail that, um, from everything from snowfall to parking to um, um, just what our community is in, what they need, what we want, who we are as people. Um, the attention to detail for a boardwalk, I think is so important to welcome our community into their space and just not make it just a resort where you feel like you can't enter that space or use the Bay Trail. So I love your detail. Um, and um, beyond loving this project and thinking what it's gonna do for the economy, for our downtown businesses, um, super hard season this year, I think, for our downtown retail. It's a pretty tough season on all of us and we're adjusting to, um, you know, we have higher wages that we have to pay now. And we also have higher rents now, just how our economy has changed. And um, having a facility that will operate in our shoulder seasons is so important for our downtown. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well, even though I know you've probably thought about that. And um, trying to think if there's, oh, also, um, we didn't talk about Trinity. And for the record, I know that Trinity has served in that space for so many years. And we all love Trinity so much. So I just wanna bring um, just to everybody's attention that um, I think it would be sad to lose such a beautiful restaurant. And I'm not saying we're gonna lose them, but just to take note that we love Trinity and we love Justin. And um, that family has served our community so well in years past. So I wish you guys the best of luck. And if we can serve you in any way downtown, let us know and we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
John Matthew Hashem.
Well, since nine eleven, they may even use my first name, but uh, it's Matt Haslam. Of all the options that I was thinking that I may have to live next to, since I'm a full-time Seasons owner and resident, I think this one works out really well. It's a family-run, Western-based, understand the, this part of the world. And I think that's really an advantage for us. The second thing is I think this is gonna bring business to us during the shoulder season because of the, the spaces that they have for conferences, et cetera. And I think that would be excellent. So I'm definitely for this and I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Taylor.
Thank you. I'm uh, Richard Taylor and uh, we live at Seasons and love Sandpoint. And we were cordial and didn't like it, but we came up here. Walkability to me was the most important part, especially um, getting a little older. There's, I love the presentation because I was not able to read up on this and so you guys did a great job. I think what uh, Matt said about being in Montana, understanding the Western part versus getting somebody else in here that doesn't understand this is critically important for uh, this community to, and to strive. I think uh, what uh, you just said, I really hope Trinity is going to be at this new hotel because traveling as much as we have, it's such a fam- great food, but great um, management, employees, and it's Sandpoint. To me, that's very important. And I am done and I will pass on my time to uh, Justin when he's up.
That, that's what I thought. That's what I, thanks for the clarification. All right.
Justin Dick.
Justin, I don't know if you heard that little conversation, but the rules are three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Justin Dick, six oh two South Ella. I have a rather unique perspective on the hotel as I have spent more time than anyone in this community at City Beach and in its current location. Uh, I also have a unique perspective because I've worn many hats in this community since moving here in two thousand and six. I've owned Trinity at City Beach at the Edgewater for the past fifteen years and been the longest-tenured lessee of that building since its existence. Formerly on the Board of the Sandpoint Chamber of Commerce, formerly on the Visit Sandpoint Tourism Council for over a decade. I'm the former President of the Bonner General Health Foundation. Uh, I am a current city counselor. Through Trinity, I have had the pleasure of meeting almost, or working with every nonprofit in Sandpoint, the surrounding area, as well as making relationships with our local community members and their families, our visitors and our part-time residents. I have also been advised by a legal counsel not to speak tonight, but I am going to choose to do so. We can bicker back and forth about the design of the hotel and what it should look like, what it shouldn't like. Um, would it be better if it looked like Amquah Bank or the Panada or the Coachava Building or that Yellow Mustard Hotel next to Server Burger, right? At the end of the day, our community doesn't have a lot of continuity and sometimes that's what makes it amazing, right? Is that different blocks have very different looks and very different materials. What is not debatable tonight is that it is time for the best Western edgewater to come down. Okay, the place is a mess from fifty years of deferred maintenance from the former owners. Last summer, we had sewer water overflowing from the toilets on the second floor down onto the first floor. We had a wedding party that was dining with us that we literally had to send across, off of our patio, across City Beach, over to Martha's Snack Shack to use the bathrooms on their wedding night while they were there because we did not have the facility to do that. The place is in such disrepair that I've been dropped from my insurance, uh, my insurance down at Trinity for three years in a row. And I'm glad to say after months of negotiating, I was finally given insurance today. Um, several years ago, we had a void in the concrete in the foundation that was four feet wide underneath our bar that was a cave full of gray water that we still to this day have no idea where it's coming from. Uh, former Sandida, Sandida Maintenance Employee told me that you could literally swim underneath the swimming pool with the amount of holes that are in there right now. Many of you in this room have had the pleasure of dining at Trinity in February, where you finally get the chance to take the family out and you get to sit by the window. And then there's a five-gallon empty mayonnaise bucket with brown water dripping from the roof, right? The only thing sometimes that keeps the water in is the paint itself and we've had to repaint several sections a dozen times over the course of the last fifteen years. My time is running short here and I would like to see if I can gift, be gifted another three minutes. Lance Lane Quest will give, gift me his three minutes. And that's, that's just a small fraction of what happens at the restaurant. The rooms on the north end of the hotel, from where they have to put their snow, uh, their snowpack flood out the two top-floor rooms and the two bottom-floor rooms. Uh, despite Avril's efforts since taking over, the hallways in July and August are over ninety degrees and freezing in the winter, you could taste it, take an ice chipper and scrape the inside of the windows in the hallways. Um, I've been promised a lot since two thousand and nine in terms of this building coming down, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and seventeen. And after COVID, it's cost me roughly three million dollars to find my preparation in terms of buying jalapenos in the old Trubies building to find a home for my employees since doing this. Again, the, the, we can bicker about the design, but it needs to be rebuilt. And I believe the rebuild will be the best thing that happens to this community. Sandpoint is in a very unique position where our growing demographic is sixty and above right now. We are going to have a general, generational wealth and home transfer, uh, unlike many in this world in the next five to fifteen years here, where we're going to have a ton of houses come up on the market, okay, from our elderly folks. And most of these folks are genetic dead ends. Their kids can't afford to pay the property taxes. They can't uproot themselves from LA or Colorado to come back and move here. Uh, and they can't purchase the homes themselves. What typically happens is they're going to be sold at the highest, to the highest bidder for second home, third home, fourth home, BlackRock, Vanguard, hedge funds, because they can get a better return on the short-term rental than they can playing the stocks. And if you wanna see what that'll do to a community, ask Haley, Victor, Driggs, Sun Valley, McCall, all of those places where in some cases sixty to seventy percent of their single-family residents are now single-family, single, or excuse me, are now short-term rentals. And if you wanna see what that does to a population here, it takes our population density of a year-round population and brings it down only to the months where we can recreate. Um, that is extremely detrimental for all the independently-owned and operated business in Sandpoint, where we have to start making a decision. Do we stay open year-round for a lower population? Or do we only open when the getting is good and we pack up our stuff and open a business elsewhere where we have higher density? Uh, I gotta zip through this here. Uh, the way to protect ourselves is from the conference space, okay? That is the biggest way. It's the best kind of tourism that we can ask for. You bring groups of people from outside, they come use the facilities, they get done with their conference, they go descend upon downtown. We take their money and we send them back to wherever they came from. Okay, that is the way that we can protect ourselves from short-term rental. To all transparency, I have no skin in the game. They have made me no promises, no deals, no nothing. I stand up here with the future of seventy of my employees' lives in my hands, hoping that tonight you pass this and we are somehow able to work out a deal with Avril that Trinity remains at that location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chloe Sensels.
It's Jenkins, but I just wanted to say that I am in favor of this. I really appreciate everything that this team has done. I have a shop downtown, small business. I also own an event planning business and I do a lot of weddings here in town. Usually they're on people's private residence. We do not have anywhere in town to have weddings, parties, events. Not only that, um, all of our nonprofits in town. We have over five, five hundred nonprofits. We don't have anywhere to host events, to raise the money that we need for this town. When I went to the meeting, they said that not only are they gonna give those nonprofits a reasonable cost to rent that space, they would help participate in donating money towards these nonprofits in our community and that speaks very highly. So I am in favor.
Thank you.
Clay Hutchison.
Good evening, Clay Hutchison. I live in town. I do not live at the Seasons, but um, I'm a big supporter of the businesses here. Uh, we need year-round activity to keep our businesses going. If we lose them, this will become a ghost town and we're kind of on that way, uh, as, as, as some of you know. In two thousand and sixteen, uh, the city announced uh, a master plan vision for the City Beach with a very stated uh, objective of having year-round activities at the City Beach to encourage a lot more economic development, a lot of activities for our citizens to do and things like that. We're about to enter our ninth year since that announcement. Been a lot of planning, uh, some of it quite good planning and some of it, you know, maybe over the top, but that's a subjective opinion. And, and the revitalization of this hotel that uh, Justin has very eloquently uh, said needed to be torn down a while back has always been on the plans. And uh, and this is a big step to that. So, you know, we can argue, as Justin also said, about whether you like this kind of building, that kind of building, the material, that material, but it's not really up to us. It's really up to private landowners. And so, you know, the question to you all is, is, does it, does it meet the codes and, and things like that? And I think that uh, that you'll have to deliberate. But sitting back here, these guys have made a huge effort to mitigate all the questions and problems that you get from a development this size and it's big. And so I think it's gonna be the anchor for the City Beach and, and hopefully in another nine years, we'll see a really robust downtown that is, has activities and economic viability year-round, not just in the, in the peak season. So please uh, give it your consideration positively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mickey Quinn.
Good evening, I'm Mickey Quinn. When I first moved here in nineteen ninety-seven, I was the store manager of the Cedar Street Bridge and what Foster was talking about with the byway. I remember those two distinct groups arguing about how it's gonna kill downtown and it didn't. And if anything, business is so important to our community and a diversity of business. The thing that the Avril family brings is their expertise, their skills and their experience. And I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Holbert.
I'm Chuck Holbert, uh, been living in the, in the area for about thirteen years, a little more. Um, uh, my partner and I own one of the, uh, the townhouses at the Seasons. And uh, I, I don't wanna repeat the things that people have said. For all the reasons that I've already heard, I'm for this project without a doubt. Um, it'll, it, we're on the map already, but we're really gonna find ourselves on the map as time goes forward and people get uh, the kind of service that I think the Avril family can provide. I have uh, only two things to add. One, uh, I think Justin Dick is uh, he's never gonna be a, a hired manager. He's a businessman and he is a, a good entrepreneur and a, a good community member. And I think his, his involvement with the food and beverage aspect of this project would be a great thing uh, for those of us who love to come to his uh, his facilities and uh, know his employees and him. He always talks for ten minutes when I sit down somewhere in his restaurant, if he's there. Um, and I, I think that the Avril family would benefit uh, from his involvement. Uh, but he, again, he's not, he's not just a manager, he's an entrepreneur. And that has to be considered uh, as part of their calculation. I encourage them uh, to make some kind of arrangement with him, which will bring me to town more often than I would otherwise come. The second uh, and is, is that intersection at First and Bridge uh, needs, is really gonna need some help because if you get twenty people lined up in that, in a busy time, they'll sit there for forty-five minutes. And that needs to be fixed some, somewhere or another. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Corey Obenauer.
Well, I can't top none of them. My name is Corey Obenauer. I'm a business owner downtown. I own Burlwood Dreams on the corner of First and Church. So I understand all about Bridge Street. Um, I'm also a member of Downtown Merchants Association and I hail from the Holquist family on Jewel Lake that has been here for four generations. Um, I, I love this community. I came here from Montana, that's where I was born. Um, and I, um, I appreciate so much the community, the town. It's clean, it's peaceful. Um, I, I, I just very much love it here. In any case, I just wanna say that this team is amazing. They're impressive in every way. They're trying to be conducive with our community. They're trying to support our community. And for you folks and all of the laws and regulations, they're also, although they're not a hundred percent compliant yet, compliant yet, they're doing everything they can to be, they're interested in being here. They're interested in our community, everything they're doing in their design and, and, and support of the community, um, I, I think is just a hundred percent. Um, al- also, uh, I, I do wanna add where Justin is concerned, Justin Dick. Um, he's been a friend of mine for a long time. He is not only about running a business, and he is a businessman, but in, also he supports his employees. He has programs for employees. He supports this community. And like the other gentleman said, he will sit down with you, through your dinner, visit with you. He's all about this community. He's had so much civic involvement that I think he belongs and I think it's a good marriage for this motel to be um, also uh, in a, in a position to, to rebuild that restaurant and have him included in their process. So thank you for your time. You guys are the decision-makers and uh, you're all about this community just as much as everybody sitting here. So I hope that your decision is, is a good one.
Thank you.
Brent Baker.
I'm Brent Baker. I'm not a resident of Sandpoint, but a resident of Bonner County. Uh, and I am the Executive Director of the- And I am the executive director of the Ponder Economic Partnership. And we, uh, support, uh, this project conditionally. There's three, three conditions I'd like to mention. And they've all, two of the three have already been brought up, the parking, uh, as well as, uh, uh, workforce housing. And the third one that wasn't mentioned is, uh, talent pipeline. We have a shortage in, in the industry of, uh, of talent keeping restaurants and hotels going. I've seen places shut down short hours because they just can't get the help. But these are things we're working on in our organization. So it's nothing that'll be solved here tonight, but we just would ask a commitment to work on the, all three of those because I think they're all solvable. We just need to get after them. Uh, and I say, I say I have plenty of time left. I'll say that uh, I'm familiar with the organization, not personally, I've never met any of these people, but uh, my daughter and her family and, and two of our grandchildren live in Whitefish, just down the road on Whitefish Mountain Road, not far from the lodge. We had a family reunion there about, uh, six years ago and I was able to observe, you know, clearly they're part of that community and anchor to that community and community involved. And when I, as a retired builder and developer, business owner, I noticed that, you know, the lodge was well designed, well maintained. And, uh, he mentioned in his presentation, their commitment to management, the things we had our family, four generation family reunion there and we had uh, our, our big banquet there. And I noticed right away how well managed the place was and how well trained the employees were. We had a, an extremely positive experience. So I can say, just from my own personal experience, I can kind of see what they bring to the table. So I have confidence that you all will work out because this is a great commission, well staffed commission, asking really good questions. Work out the kinks because the value of this project from the economic development point of view, completely outweighs the little challenges that I'm sure we'll overcome. So I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that is all who have requested to speak in favor. For the record, I note that there are two city residents who, um, are in favor but did not wish to speak.
Thank you. But someone else is speaking right now in favor?
No, that's.
Do we have anybody who wishes to speak neutral?
No, Mr. Chair.
Do we have anybody who wishes to speak against?
Yes. Pat Holland.
All right. My name's Pat Holland. Thanks for having us in here. Um, when I was checking that box, it's like neutral, against, favorable on some things. And I'd say for you guys, good job on your, uh, presentation. And we could have done a lot worse as a community. So you're from Whitefish. And, uh, yeah, so good positive things there. Um, I'll try to keep this quick and short. I wouldn't go ahead and just put this through as is. And the reason why is it seems like we have plenty of time. You had mentioned a couple of times that things were moving very quickly. And doesn't seem like we should do something big like this quickly, get it done right. One of the big things sidewalk width on the south side at only five feet. If you're walking or you're biking down Bridge Street on the north side of, of the road, that's the wide part. You go through the congestion of the train bridge, can't do anything about that. But then you go to a five foot section, okay? In my opinion, that should be bigger because they're trying to make the trailhead at the tiki bar to go to Ponder Bay Trail, which that doesn't really exist right now. You use Dock Street and go back to the actual trailhead. So anyways, I think that should be wider there. And then, uh, parking needs to be figured out better. As much as people want to promote transportation and buses in, people in Sandpoint don't do that unfortunately. Employee parking is a needed thing there. Um, and, uh, one of you guys came up, said something to that was, you know, the parking's gonna be a problem at peak times and City Beach is already slam packed. Like you guys see it down there. I see it. There's no extra room. And if there's, their employees are taking up parking for City Beach during peak times, then that's not really ideal. Um, that should be for public use, swimming at the beaches, things like that. Um, overall, really like it. Just a few little train, little changes there and tweaks and it'll be good. I'm a business owner. I'll definitely profit off of it, you know, with more people downtown. Um, so all in all, overall good, but I wouldn't pass it as it is. Um, and just work on it a little more. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that is all have, who have requested to speak at this time.
Do we have anybody online?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And in the spirit of inclusion, is there anybody here who would like to speak?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we have one who's received authorization to speak.
Okay. We have one online commenter.
Rebecca Holland.
Uh, good evening. Um, my name is Rebecca Holland. I'm a longtime resident of Sandpoint. My concern is that while the vehicle, um, access and vehicle parking appears to be well thought out, it appears that bicycle, uh, bicycle amenities, uh, need more attention. Given that cyclists are not to ride on sidewalks in downtown, um, because this is part of a city ordinance, uh, that needs to be honored. Separated bike lanes are needed. And I didn't hear too much about bike parking for the restaurants or the hotel as required by city code. So I hope the commission will address this and the owners can better explain whatever that was for a revised condition seven that they were asking to be considered. And secondly, real quickly, I want to say it came to our public's attention today that the former city administrator, Jennifer Stapleton is the project's hired consultant. And given that her previous involvement in city development was song, was strongly rejected by the owner, the voters in November, it comes across as rather, um, well, it doesn't come across well to us to have her involved in a consult, as a consultant on a big project like this. Tonight, uh, Mr. Avril made mention of the, uh, City Beach Master Plan and showed drawings of the proposed plan, things, et cetera. And we know this is something that Stapleton pushed through council. The truth is the majority.
Holland, we have to not make this a personal statement. You can limit your comments, but don't make them personal.
Well, we, we do not wish to see the City Beach Master Plan, uh, pushed through and, um, with its expensive, grandiose changes and, um, the changes to our beautiful open beach. And I think the Avril hospitality people, um, need to know this, that this is a plan that we've, that we've strongly rejected. And our, and our community is, um, really trying to go forward and heal uh, from some other things, though some damage was done. And so, um, I think Avril Hospitality needs to know this. Thank you for allowing me to comment tonight. And I wish this project success as you will be making a very large footprint in our beautiful, beloved town. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back to my invitation. Anybody else want us, oh, have you filled out a form? Uh, we would need to do that, but then you certainly can speak. Okay. In the interest of time.
I came in a little bit late. I apologize. Uh, my name's Cliff Mort. Uh, I'm the current developer of, uh, Seasons and, uh, have a resident there as well as one in Coeur d'Alene. I just want to applaud the Avril's and, and, um, want to leave this on a, a positive note, uh, just because I think they've, they really, uh, to, to come into this town and, and see what they've done and, and, uh, actually just see their presentation, I have to applaud them. Uh, takes, takes a lot of money and a lot of time and, and certainly, uh, they've done this in the past, but, uh, to see them do it in Sandpoint, Idaho, when I saw what this was going to be originally, when the Coxes, uh, embarked on it. It, it was, it really wasn't gonna be something like this. This is gonna be a statement in the community. It's gonna be something that I think we're all gonna be proud of. You know, for a long, long time. So I, I, I know what, uh, things like this, uh, does, um. You know, uh, I was, I'll date myself a little bit, but I remember when Dwayne Hagadon decided that, uh, he was gonna do the resort in Coeur d'Alene. And, uh, you know, this is not even remotely, uh, something like that, but in Coeur d'Alene at the time, to see what that did to that community. I mean, it, it brought, uh, a convention center, you know, world class resort and you know, I, I think in, in a similar scale, this, this is what this will do to this community. It, it allows some of the businesses that currently, uh, don't have a spot to, to bring conventions. And, and I think, uh, you know, what they have here, it's, it's just gonna be an awesome thing for the community. So with that, um, I'll, I'll end my, my talk, but, uh, I think it'll be a big, big plus, um, for the Seasons as well and, uh, look forward to interacting, uh, as time goes on. So, good job, guys.
Thank you. All right, last call. Applicants, anything you've heard there that you would like to rebut in any way? Any other clarification points?
I don't know if we want to bring up the plan on it, but I, I just wanted, we, we didn't talk about the bike racks, but we do have bike racks and bike parking on the plan, so we can show that if that helps.
I mean, I did see that and actually had a number to it, the number of spaces, yeah.
Heard a lot about parking tonight. From our experience and from we, how we interpret the code, I think there's adequate parking. But if, um, if it would be appropriate to add a condition to study the parking, we would be, um, fully in support of that. Um, it moves us forward. It moves the whole project forward. If it shows that there's inadequate parking, we would be, uh, remiss, uh, to not take care of our guests uh, that are coming to the hotel. So we would provide offsite parking in that situation. If we build additional parking underground, um, the site is, of course, has that capacity. It just becomes economically unfeasible. It's, it, it's at the tune of millions of dollars. You saw that diagram. It's all underground to be really unfeasible, but but if a condition to, uh, study the parking is appropriate, I, I would support that for sure. And then one more comment, uh, we've had a great working relationship with Justin. Totally understand, um, all that he's brought to the community. It's been amazing from a hospitality perspective to see him in action. And we look forward to great conversations with him about what we can do together in the future. So not sure what that is, but we'll, but we, um, fully understand and, and look forward to that in the future. And then finally, um, the building is, um, the building, we purchased the building two years ago. We had intended to move this much, much faster along. We, uh, waited for the, um, we've been in discussions with the city since the day we purchased it. So two years of discussions, we've had this application really ready to go for over a year now and we stalled it to make sure that, uh, the lakefront master plan that the city was studying. There was anything that we need to incorporate. So we were kind of waiting and then we submitted our application, um, back in November. With the idea that we were gonna be in front of the, uh, council here, yeah, after the first of the year and and staff changes and a variety of things that kind of landed us here today. But we're really excited, uh, to move it forward. We, uh, find that the, the holding caught in the, the building, the insurance is a real thing at the property. The repair and maintenance is a real thing. The holding cost, uh, of that age of a building has ran, uh, up big, big bills. And so we're just excited to be able to get over the hump and get on with the development and for the benefit of, of all people. It's, uh, it's good. So, anyways, thank you. And then maybe ahead, uh, yeah, thank you.
Just have one more. Um, we just, from the design end of the landscape and I, we just wanted to reiterate the desire to have the ten feet from the midpoint to the north of, for our boardwalk and not have that be sort of twenty feet of highway or landing strip the whole way. Just feels not like the place we're trying to create, but having the nooks and seating and areas and a little bit of placemaking diversity, um, we're all for that.
Maybe one last point is, uh, we kind of went over it, uh, quickly, but that condition about, uh, when the project would commence, um, that, uh, the one piece of that that's really critical for us is the amount of investment that we have today into it. And then the amount of investment from today through, um, those professional architectural plans is going to be substantial, triple from what we have today. And so if there's a caveat that needs approval down the road, it would comp, it would put all those funds at risk and that, that would be just a very risky scenario for us. So the idea that, that we can, can, um, extend it as long as we're working on it and making efforts to, to bring the project to conclusion, I think is the important part. Part for us and not putting all those dollars at risk, um, on a, on a cycle, something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Oh.
Of course, Ms. Holland does have those arrangements made for her for a period of time. It is your discretion whether or not you'd elect to allow that one virtual attendee to comment before you close the public hearing.
Uh, I'm all in favor. The more comments, the better. That's my attitude. So if they still would like to comment.
Susan Martin.
Yes, my name is Wayne Martin for the record. Mr. Chairman and commission people, I would ask that you look at, and maybe they have already done it. I did not hear it. Thermal runaway of batteries for laptops, cell phones, uh, electric bicycles, electric vehicles is a real threat. And it is not well addressed out here on the west coast in the Pacific Northwest. New York has created a lot of antis on, on that, uh, and water is a minor thing to put those fires out. It takes a lot of water, a lot of water. So I, I, if it has not been addressed, I really hope that that will be looked at both by the fire department and these people. Parking is a big concern. Uh, it's difficult for us to come into town and find a place to park. Uh, I'm glad that they're at least looking at doing something for the employees to come in and have a place to stay. Twenty, uh, forty eight parking spots is all that I saw designated for bicycles. For what the intent and hope is, I'm not sure if that's enough. And, and, and I hope, you know, for them that it is a success and that is a positive for the city. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Was he for or against or neutral, Cassidy? Do you know?
Because I'm keeping tally, so I just.
They don't, um, state that on Zoom, but he's raised his hand again. So if, with your permission, I'll unmute him again.
Just to answer that question.
Just for, against or neutral?
It, it's things that I'm hoping that, that you, the city council and the developer will look at, uh, concerns. So I would guess it's probably neutral.
That sounds right. Thank you for clarification. I didn't really notice any new facts there, um, but if there's anybody in the audience who thought there was and therefore they would like to address that.
Well, and the applicant has a right if they wish to rebut that most recently.
Thank you. All right. Uh, well then, I will declare the public hearing closed and at this time the commission will deliberate. Well, then, I will declare the public hearing closed, and at this time, the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided, and questions from the commission can only be directed to city staff.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So the, I I think we have to somewhat narrowly look at the business in front of us here. But in in terms of like the staging of this, let's say that there was something critically wrong with the six-inch main in terms of providing water. At what point in time would that get figured out, and what does that sort of put at risk? So if it's a building permit time, it would be figured out prior to that. I'm just trying to figure out what we got to vet tonight relative to what's obviously going to come up at building permit.
All of the utilities are the the first designs to be checked as we get into the building permit process. And so whether it's sewer, water, storm drainage, power, fiber, all of those things on the site civil are figured out first and vetted and approved before we issue a building permit. So I I think we have reasonable confidence tonight that we have capacity within the system to both provide a volume of water that's needed to accommodate a volume of stormwater and to, well, we don't know that yet, but we will through the stormwater planning. And but we do know that we have capacity at the plant to accommodate the wastewater that's generated here as well. So I think we have reasonable surety that those systems will be checked and verified before we issue a building permit. And if they're found to be inadequate, then that will be on the applicant in the city to figure out how to update those facilities.
Mr. Chair, but that has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight. Correct. I just wanted to clarify, right?
Mr. Chairman, it's not accurate, says nothing to do because you you have to find that we have adequate capacity within our systems to serve the project.
And and I do think that one of the things we need to make a condition because it's not in there yet is that stormwater management. That was just kind of a thing that was, need to include that. Commissioners, questions? More questions?
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Dunkle.
Darren, can you can you help me with the, in regards to the variance, how we are satisfying the conditions of the variance?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the the analysis that I provided in the staff report is probably the the best thing I can point to. I mean, I can, I can read you the, what the findings are that we need to make, and then we can talk about why I think we meet those findings.
Please, specifically the special conditions. What in staff's opinion bring this project to show a special condition as far as a unique piece of property or or something that specifically this property shows to to absolutely warrant a zero, a variance from the zero setback?
Working on a share here. Okay, so here's our required findings that have to be made on a variance. First is that special conditions and circumstances exist that are particular to the land, structures or buildings in the same district. So this is where we were talking about the intent of the zero-foot setback, trying to create sort of an outdoor room feeling, more of a traditional town form like you have on First Avenue. By contrast, this property is a two-and-a-half-acre property, more or less. It sits on the lake, it has no buildings across the street from it, nor any hope of getting buildings across the street from it. And so within the commercial A zoning district, this property is is unique. It's not like your, you know, six- or eight-thousand-foot town lot that you find on on First Avenue. The second one is that a literal interpretation of the applicable sections of this code would deprive the applicant of the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this code. In in this case, building a facility of this size and complexity, and you saw what is almost impossible to do and meet meet the zero-foot setback. And so at least for what is proposed, it it makes the renders the property somewhat undevelopable for a facility that's contemplated at this size. You also saw that the applicant showed you a massing diagram of what it would do to the view shed were the building to be built up to the property line, which has a much greater impact than the facility that's proposed being pulled back from the property line. So the third is that special conditions, considerations, conditions and circumstances do not result from actions or desires of the applicant. And so he's become a little tricky, right? It and sometimes it's difficult if we're if we take these two literally. But basically, the the test for this sort of finding is, could the applicant build their project? Let me say this a different way. Is is there a characteristic of the land that would prevent the applicant from complying with the regulation that everybody else in the zone has to comply with? And in this case, being a two-and-a-half-acre property on the lakefront, currently developed with a hotel, it it renders the property in a unique circumstance that that is not of the making of the applicant. I mean, the applicant did nothing except buy the property as it is. And so it was not of their making that the property is unable to comply with the the intent of the setback at zero. And the last is that the grant in the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privileges that are denied by the code to other land structures or buildings in the same district. And so here, this is something where the this remedy exists to other landowners within the commercial A district. If you can make the same findings, that there are characteristics of the property that make it impossible for that property to comply with the zone, or impractical, or it just, you know, in the, it makes no sense to the intent of what we're trying to accomplish with the zero-foot setback. So that that's my high-level summation of what was written in the staff report. And by the way, planners hate variances because they're hard, and you should hate variances too. I I did one, I think it was the first application I did when when I was helping you all out a couple, three years ago. And and they're hard because it is the applicant asking for a special dispensation to not comply with the regulation that everybody else has to comply with. Therefore, we try to be very careful to say, what is it about the property itself? Not about what the applicant necessarily wants to do, but what's the site and situation of that property that makes it so difficult to comply with the code standard?
And in my mind, if I might add, piggyback on that, it's that this, the the variance is to help meet the desires of the community, not the applicant. And that is because it's preserving a view shed, and I could see down the road, another applicant in a similar product could say, well, I could do this, but I want to maintain a view shed, and that would be a reasonable thing for us to consider at that time. But for this particular property, and where they're talking about not building that property line, in my estimation, I see it as enhancing the the project and and meeting desires of the community. You want to go, or Mr. Ramar?
Um, just to wrap, just to wrap up, I don't disagree with the variance approval. I think the code, once again, fails to 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 clearly define what what we're we're all thinking is, it just is better to be to have a setback. It doesn't say that. And and I wish it did because that would make it very clear. And I know in the commercial zone, there's a emphasis to maximize property use and to, you know, to not waste commercial space because we're trying to keep it in a in a condensed area. And is the commercial zoning in this property even correct? But that's what it is. So in my opinion, it's the setback makes makes sense to be as proposed. And along along the lines of code, everybody knows that I'm, there's things in code that I don't agree with and that we don't follow. And I'm perfectly happy to go forward with the with the variance because it does make sense. But I'll emphasize once again that our code doesn't make sense for stuff like this. And I just want that to be noted again. And but I I just want to say, overall, you guys have done an excellent job as far as your presentation. You guys have spent a lot of time. I can tell that you're the right kind of people for this. The conference space is is very much needed here, definitely, definitely going to fill a need. Fine dining is also something that I'm partial to, so I'll be there quite a bit. It'll probably be Justin, I assume, so I just kind of throw that in there. And and I know that you guys have been very patient, and I know that you put up with a very long timeline that I wish we could have, you know, done more to speed that along. But you're here now, and I'm ready to move forward with it. Thank you.
Mr. Ramar?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve with two caveats. One being that the condition to study a employee parking offsite. And the other that we accept their number five and number seven, which used a three-year sequence as opposed to the staff report on the number three. It makes more sense, it really does. Being a construction, I know, you 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 can't put a dead-end caveat on a project because you just don't know what you're going to encounter. But as long as there's substantial completion or something to that phraseology, that you're moving it along. So yes, my motion is to approve.
If I can piggyback on, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we have the motion, so we can.
So so we need our motion to be just a little bit more complete with making.
Are you actually making a motion, or are you just saying you're in favor of it right now? Oh, I don't know, I'd rather just make a motion if I can. What do you want me to do, get more detailed?
We we might.
Well, I think we want some more discussion before we get to that point.
Okay.
But you're on deck, you're ready.
So you either need the motion to fail for lack of.
Okay. Is there a second for the motion? At this time, no, but maybe in just a moment. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask also, piggyback with Ivan, I also agree with with that. There, I wish we could see that slide with their number. But the one where the bike head walkway, six feet, that doesn't make any sense to me. The entire pathway has been, and I heard today that they measured it, it's actually five-and-a-half feet. Seems of of, just to keep things consistent along that way, that I'd like to add that in there that they don't have to do, oh, yep, here we go. That that's striping from five feet to six feet doesn't need to be a condition. I also would like to talk about that pathway. If it, if fire has already discussed this and has approved the plan with the midway point of the 20 feet, I'd like to preserve some of that green space in the plan. I don't think it's conducive to that if you require that 20 feet all the way to the northern property. So I would like to also strike that one as far as a condition.
What which are you striking? Could you be more clear?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not on.
Let me ask you this.
It's not on this.
Are you accepting their proposed amendments to the conditions?
I am, yes. There's only a couple of them that I'm accepting.
Okay, so which, as listed up here, are you accepting in your discussion point?
Five.
Okay. And number seven.
Number seven.
Okay.
And and two and three.
Okay.
Actually, four of their, or three of their four. Just five B, ten feet east of the problem. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that one.
So are you accepting five B as well?
No.
Okay.
Those are my opinions.
How why would, how why would you want the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Because it says it's 10 feet there.
Well, there's discussion of 12 feet. I don't know, Darren, if you could clarify.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so again, we're, I think we're all agreed on what the fire access is in the 20 feet to the midpoint of the building. The condition of approval that's written in the staff report suggested that 20 feet would be a good, consistent way to connect the north to the south, particularly given the multimodal bike traffic that that we'll expect on that mixing with the pads. That said, every time we do something like this, it's a trade-off. And in this case, the trade-off is with green space. And I would say I I think the applicant's done a nice job of providing seating areas and other, you know, amenities to draw the public in, which when you look at what the intent of the amenities are, that is what the intent is. So all of that said, in my opinion, I think the 12 feet would be a nice compromise. And and with regard to the paving or the surfacing of that, I think as long as, you know, the fire access can provide the structural support for the vehicles, we would be fine with a mix of concrete and and pavers. I would respectfully suggest that grasscrete does not work well for bikes. And so I would suggest that we do not go there with grasscrete. It would be fine for trucks, you could design it to support the trucks. But it has, this has to double as, you know, bike access as well. And I, you know, just pointing out that 10 feet of this pathway that will end up being rebuilt is on the public property. And so it really is in your purview to make that that decision.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll just, this is for the commission. In terms of the things that I heard, stormwater management, sharpening the pencil around parking, although that's flitted to our own, again, I'll point at you, Mo's, our own code, right? Pedestrian flow largely on the south side. We had a member of the community weigh in on an attempted redesign that actually looked pretty solid, that actually increases pedestrian flow. That one's a good one to take a look at. And then this business around fire flow suppression. Was there any other sort of issues that are sort of out there generally? Anything else?
No, not on my notes.
No, I'd I'd just add one. Do you think, what do you guys think about in conditions two or two and three that we put, that we do put a time limit or a time minimum or maximum on? Because it's open-ended right now. It just says so long as applicant has demonstrated a reasonable effort.
Your code says that the proposed work shall commence within one year following the date of your approval. So you can't go more restrictive than what your code already provides for.
Well.
They have one year plus extensions under your code, no matter what.
Yeah. So extensions are, remind me, extensions are unlimited?
It could be, as long as they're proceeding with the project, they would come back before you to ask for.
And are the extensions extenuating to file for and be granted? Like, is it a large process to be granted an extension?
No, they would just get on the agenda and come ask for an.
They come back in front of us again, right?
Yes. Yes, I I don't have any concerns from a legal perspective or compliance with your code with their recommended change to conditions two and three.
So their changes would just make it to where they wouldn't have to come back and see us?
They may have to come back and see you.
And for city staff over here, that, and again, the the timeline that I think had been put into the proposed conditions was demolition permit within a year and completion of instruct of construction within.
You put application for the demolition permit?
Application, correct. Yeah, not, yeah, not not commencing demolition, but application.
By September 25.
Right. And and what we're talking about now would eliminate that.
No, this is, yes, they, the request from the applicant is to replace conditions two and three with what you see on the screen.
And from the the city standpoint, what's your take on that?
Well, it's, so two is almost verbatim from the code, but with a little bit more, with a little more room built in because of the complexity of the project. Three is really more of a best practice so that you don't have condition or developments hanging out there forever, right? At some point, you have to fish your cut bait on these things. I, and so. I, and so that's been the practice of the city is to put some kind of um, stop in, in the project if it's not progressing. So, you know, that said, three, condition number three is, is not the end of the world. Um, and if condition two is, you know, not pleasing to the commission, certainly you can go with something a little less of rigorous. It's just, you know, it, it's pretty amorphous, uh, what's proposed and it's difficult for staff to um, administer those from time to time. I mean, it's, I don't mean this to be pejorative, but it's almost meaningless the way that it's written. It just says, you know, we'll keep going as long as we can show you we're going. And, and maybe that's fine. Um, but that, that would be the only concern.
Well, it seems to me that they're really wanna be aggressive and get this project underway. It is, um, Brian is correct. This has been in the works for a few years. And this was already have supposed to, when Amy was still here in October, she had told me this is coming to you guys soon. And here we are nine months later. Um, so it's not, it has not been a quick process. This is not something that we've just been rushing through and and putting in, in front of us without any thought. Um, so it just seems to me that it's, I mean, we've very thorough examination of this, both the city and, and the Avro's and their staff. I just can't, um, it doesn't make any sense to me to prolong this process any longer. It's been painstakingly slow. Um, just like our comp plan has been. Uh, so it just seems to me to make sense um, to move forward on this project for our citizens, residents, tourists, uh, businesses. So.
Sounds like you're ready to make a motion.
Uh, I don't believe so, cause I think I saw another commissioner who wants to speak.
Well, I was just gonna say that, now that I can talk here, that as dilapidated as that building is, I think they're gonna wanna get rid of it pretty quick. And I don't think they're gonna get sit there with an empty hole as expensive as that property is for very long. Though I think that trying to put some timeframes on it, I think they're gonna put their own timeframe on. And I think it's gonna be a lot quicker than we really think it is.
I hope there weren't too many guests, potential guests here listening to some of the earlier.
And if I could add, if you're finished, Mr. Chairman. I took a tally of, of all that spoke and there was twenty in support of this um, project with six of them being seasoned owners. So those are the immediate residents that are affected by this, two against and one neutral. So it's, if we're um, gonna listen to the public, it seems pretty obvious to me um, moving forward is the right thing to do.
And.
There's still, if there's still question on this timing piece, your code does provide that if they are not moving forward in a diligent manner, you can deem that permit null and void, at which time that would be a final decision and they could appeal that decision to come back before you and reactivate it. So you do have um, protections in the code if, for whatever reason, they leave an empty hole out there for a long period of time, which I highly doubt they're going to do, but.
But so from a legal standpoint, their um, rewording of uh, conditions two and three are adequate.
With the, with the additional piece that's already in your code, I, I believe it's.
Correct. And, but then from the city's standpoint, is that?
We are all the city.
Well, I'm just looking for legalese here. I'm looking for the practicality, the maintenance issue that you were talking about.
Uh, yeah, no disagreement there, Commissioner, with legal counsel.
Commissioner, I have a question.
Yes.
Procedural question. So we have a list of proposed conditions in this, in the staff report, that number fourteen, fourteen conditions. Are, are we gonna um, does it make sense to go through each one? For example, uh, we talked about conditions two and three that maybe we're gonna, I mean, we just finished talking about that. Maybe we adopt their proposed language, or maybe we don't. But to go through each of these proposed staff conditions and make a motion to pass them individually, or are we gonna try to do this whole thing at once?
You need to do the whole thing at once.
Yeah. I think we'll do the whole thing at once, and if we need to add anything there or subtract anything there, that's, that's what we're supposed to be doing now. But yes, it's, it's a whole package. Now we're doing the conditional use permit first, as far as a vote.
Okay.
And when it comes around to whoever's gonna make that motion, I mean, the one, the, the one thing that I uh, think needed to, needs to be added, cause it wasn't on here, and that is the stormwater management plan, that the city will accept the stormwater management plan. Does that need to be on here, or is that just a normal part of the building permit process that we don't need to address? And we have another city staff person wanting to speak to that.
Yeah, I think it's really simple with stormwater. Anything pretty much other than a single-family house requires a stormwater plan at the time of building permit per our city code already, whether it goes through CUP or not. So.
So we don't have to include it?
You know, my recommendation is it's not necessary, although it's not gonna affect my process. If you do, it's not gonna make it harder for me to do my job, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
I could just clarify. I do like all of their conditions. Um, two, three, five, five B and seven. Just wanted to point that out.
Yes.
I was hoping you were gonna.
Took me a second. I got there.
And one other thing that I would be interested in uh, entertaining is some specifics on public amenities um, that we could give them for digesting as they go ahead with final building plans. Um, some of those things are brought up tonight and, and some we've already, we've already mentioned. One of the things that, that, that came up was the potential for offsite parking for employees or otherwise. Did that be one of those things they could look at? Another one that I'd like to see on there is there a way to include public restrooms? And any, any of this? Oh, um, another one that I would like to see is, we've, we've been focusing on the east side, but in my opinion, the south side is the most congested. And I, and that's also where there's the least amount of room to do anything about. But on the south side of this is, is, that's the funnel for both pedestrian traffic and bike. And I don't know what can be done, other than to say, we'd like to see if there's another solution that can make that bike lane sidewalk wider.
An overpass.
Pardon?
An overpass.
For bikes, bikes only. Okay, yeah.
On, on that, I have a question to staff for Darren. On that subject of the funnel, um, is the traffic impact study, would it extend to actually the queuing of cars on Bridge Street as they enter or approach into the portico? I mean, is that, or are we just talking about city streets and, well, I guess Bridge Street is a city street, but I can imagine that, given the passage of pedestrians and maybe some peak, you know, check-in time, that there might be some queuing of cars that are outside the portico on the street? And is that part of a study or the, the, what that?
Can I take that one, Darren? Thanks. Um, so the, a- as was mentioned before, the traffic impact study is in process. How it works is they will submit um, a, the first version of it to city staff, and I will review it. And we also send it to a consultant that we hire that does only traffic engineering. So um, I kind of understand it as a civil engineer, but that's one of those very specialized things that we want. That I, you know, I have a, a consultant uh, review it on behalf of us. And that's an iterative process. So for example, if either I or somebody else on city staff or our consultant thinks that it, that they left something out, or they did not consider queuing at Bridge and First, for example, w- we would make those comments and have them revise it as necessary until we were satisfied. Uh, but I can say for a fact that I have already been in communication with the consultant that they've hired to start on the traffic impact study. And um, I, I do believe that I told them specifically to um, at least uh, a- address pedestrian traffic. It's typically not what we do with these traffic impact studies in my um, experience. Uh, but for this one, it's obviously a little different, cause it's possibly at, you know, specific times, it's maybe the most heavily used pedestrian corridor in the entire city.
And, and Brandon, we might wanna add to that. It's not uncommon for the traffic impact study to identify offsite traffic mitigation measures that would be required. So we don't know yet until that study comes in, but it's possible that it will identify mitigation measures that would be required to be taken by the developer at Bridge and First. So we just won't know that till it comes in.
But I wasn't talking about Bridge and First. I was talking about Dock Street, right there, right at the portico. Anyway, just so you're aware. The queuing to get into the portico.
Correct.
To check in.
I get you.
Okay.
So again, even for that specific um, issue, you know, we could also, we could recommend offset improvements, cause that's right away as well.
And is the intersection of Bridge and First completely in this jurisdiction of the city, or is the state still involved? Is that still the routing of a state highway?
No, it's a city right of way now.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, uh, it used to be Superior First Cedar up to Fifth, and then all the way out of town was the state. And after the bypass, uh, it's now, it's actually owned by the Independent Highway District technically, just so everybody's clear, but the city essentially controls it.
Okay. All right.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Question for Fonda. So we could uh, we could read the language we have. We could say, and conditions of the staff report, except we would like to change.
You could make your motion to include all conditions outlined in the staff report with the suggested amendments by the applicant, if that's what you're looking at.
Very simple.
Seems like you wanna make an offer, sir.
You do not have to read all those conditions. You only have to say that we.
Yeah, I don't wanna read them all. Um, I would like to move that we approve that the Sandpoint Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after a consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve city application PCUP two-three dash zero 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 four, a request by Oz Architecture on behalf of Avro Hospitality Group to construct a twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot hotel resort, including hundred-and-eighty-one guest rooms, a forty-six-hundred-square-foot restaurant, a fourteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-two-square-foot event space, a second thirteen-hundred-and-ninety-one-square-foot standalone restaurant, and two-hundred-and-forty structured parking spaces, and proposed guest amenities such as fitness, wellness areas, and a pool, recreational equipment rental, and a curated retail on three-point-three-six acres comprised of two parcels, RPS zero 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 two-three-three-nine-two-one A and RPS zero 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 two-three-three-nine-three-one, one A, commonly known as eighty-five Bridge Street. The commission finds that the approval complies with the applicable provisions of Sandpoint City Comprehensive Plan and Code and is subject to conditions of approval as detailed in the staff report with the revised, revised conditions of approval that have been submitted by the applicant uh, at this public hearing. Based on evidence and testimony in the public record on this matter, the commission finds, one, that the city staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to conditional use applications contained in Sandpoint City Code, Title Nine, Chapter Nine. Number two, that the proposed conditional use is consistent with the city's overall planning goals and objectives. Did I miss anything?
That's good, but we add the uh, we didn't mention the conditions, did we?
He did.
Oh, we did, okay.
Second.
No, but how about the conditions for a study on offsite parking? I, I mentioned that on my original proposal. Are we gonna include that or not?
You're making the motion. It's up to you.
Um, I feel like the applicant has brought that to, to the attention. So I'd like to not include that.
Do we, we'll still have an opportunity. Do we have a second?
Second.
As it sits. End discussion. Do we want to amend it?
Nope, I'm fine.
Oh, okaydoke.
I think we've discussed it. Twenty.
Okay.
I'm just, I have one question concerning the two-hundred-and-ninety feet that fronts on Bridge Street and the size of that sidewalk. Um, looking at the conditions in um, the staff report, condition number twelve, it speaks to rebuilding that and was there a discussion to make that wider to improve pedestrian flow and so forth? And is that some, something we want studied, or is that part of the variance question because it, it's in that area?
I mean, I'm in agreement with you entirely that I would like to see something added there. There's an attempt to make pedestrian access there better. I don't know the best way to do that. But this is both about who owns the property, right? They have the quit claim, which we're all in agreement that they're going to do that. This does not mention anything. It says improving curb and gutter. It does not mention anything about width.
Co- correct, but it does speak to rebuilding it or rebuilding it. Um, so do we want it studied or is? I don't know how to do it, but I, I know we've talked about it and maybe whatever five and a half feet is not, you know, consistent with anything else we heard about width of walkways for this area. I mean, it just seems to be an unreasonably narrow corridor in a very busy place, so.
I, I agree and um, perhaps item twelve could, could have verboology that also says, and the applicant will work with the city to find a solution to widening the pedestrian access on Bridge, on the two-hundred-and-ninety feet of Bridge Street. That, that is not specific, it's not specified. It's just that they'll work with the city to try and find a solution.
I thought Brandon had mentioned that with, including that with the traffic impact study, although it was not normal or not, it was a little bit abnormal and he was gonna have that looked at. Was that, did I interpret your, your statement, Brandon? I thought that's what you said.
Um, no, I was mostly just talking about um, in general, not necessarily that, the width of that sidewalk as far as pedestrians. So typically, when you do a traffic impact study, you're only looking at, or a lot of times, I won't say typically, but a lot of times, you're only looking at motor vehicles. In this case, they're, they're gonna have a section where they discuss pedestrian traffic.
There's more pedestrian traffic on that stretch than there's vehicle access on that stretch.
At times, probably. Yeah. Um, but, but as far as, uh, I, I would agree that um, it's probably not in the city's best interest to put a specific width
Correct.
along of the sidewalk along Bridge Street. Uh, putting that condition really limits the design process. There's a lot of factors other than just saying we want a six-foot sidewalk and that's the end of it. It, um, you know, it's affected by the, in total, regular width, the width of the existing pavement, et cetera.
And that's why I didn't wanna specify anything, but is it reasonable to say we'll work for a solution to attempt to widen that?
I, I, yeah, I, I would be in supportive of that as a.
Hopefully it happens and maybe it's just not possible with the limitations of the space, but.
I, I will say that um, I, I, there's not a lot of detail. These are, you know, the plans at this stage of this um, CUP are schematic is what I'd call them. Uh, but from what I saw on the civil drawings, the the, the width of the proposed sidewalk is roughly in the same location as where it is now. Um, it's the same, roughly the same width and in the same location, so.
Good to know.
I mean, yeah, it's currently very inadequate and it sounds like we're replacing it with more inadequacy.
I agree, but just to be clear, there's some other factors involved. Num- number one, I should bring up that.
We don't need to, yeah.
Yeah. There's, yeah. There's, there's a turnout right now that they use for deliveries. Um, whether that goes away or not, has not been decided yet, and that affects how wide we can make the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So keep me straight here. Can uh, we have a motion, we have a second, we're in the middle of discussion. Uh, can I make a motion to amend number twelve?
So I don't think you want to amend number twelve that's specific to the deeding, to the quit claiming of that public, of that private.
Only because it talks about rebuilding the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk in addition to the quit claim. That in my mind, that just made the, the most sense to be applied.
Um, I, I think what you've done and what you wanna remember is that that, at this phase, as Brandon just indicated, you're not tying city staff to specificities while they're trying to complete site design with your applicant. I think what you, what's most beneficial is you are providing feedback to city staff as. As to what you as a commission are looking for and looking for them to accomplish for the citizens when they are in site review. So I don't, it's my.
You're thinking we would not need to address.
Need to amend the condition, you've given very clear direction to city staff as we work with the.
And and to the applicant, yeah. Okay. All right.
Sounds fun.
Yes. Uh, so we have, uh, it's time for a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamar?
Yes.
Commissioner Torpe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then we need a motion on the variance.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
For this one, I don't think we have to add the same language that we did last time because this one is contingent on everything we just passed, right? So this one, if I were to start the motion, I can just read it straight through, right?
Yes.
I'm going to get us out of here in a hurry.
Well, can I, can I please, Mr.? Yeah. My recollection is, and that was four hours ago, but. When we talked about this, there was, um, I I guess just a, a unintentional oversight to restate. The type of condition that is in the hotel conditional use permit condition, which says that it's sort of. The, you know, if you change the nature of the property, you have to come in for a new conditional use permit. Remember, we talked about that? Would that be appropriate to add that condition to the, to the motion that we're about to make for this CUP?
You just voted on your.
We're done with that. We just did the CUP now.
Oh, 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 we're not, we're not, excuse me, I'm sorry, we're not on the plumbing thing yet.
Was your vote still in the affirmative?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Just making sure if you thought we were voting on the other one.
The variance.
Very good. Commissioner, please note, there's a typo on there that should be, should say sixty five Bridge Street, not eighty five.
Yeah. Oh, yes, correct. I noticed that too.
I see eighty five, or should I be seeing sixty five?
That is eighty five.
Oh, it is sixty five?
It's a typo.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
All right, I move the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code. Approved city application PVAR two, four dash zero, 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 one. A variance request by Oz Architecture on behalf of Avril Hospitality Group to city code nine dash two dash one dot four. Requiring a zero foot maximum setback in commercial A zoning designation. The applicant is approved to construct civic and drop off space within an area approximately forty feet to a hundred and ten feet between the primary building. And the front property line on three point three six acres comprised of two parcels, RPS zero, 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 two, three, three, nine, two, one, A. And RPS zero, 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 two, three, three, nine, three, one, A, commonly known as sixty five Bridge Street. The commission finds the proposal complies with the applicable provisions as the Sandpoint City Comprehensive Plan and Code is subject to conditions of approval. As detailed in the staff report presented at the public hearing. Based on evidence and testimony in the public record on this matter. The commission finds, one, city staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to variance requests contained in city, Sandpoint City Code Title nine, Chapter nine. And two, the proposed subdivision is consistent with the city's overall planning goals and objectives.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Time for a vote. Any discussion first?
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamar?
Yes.
Commissioner Torpe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Yeah.
We're not done.
We're not done. They can, they can walk away if they want. We're not done. It's, uh. Time for the commissioners roundtable. What should we talk about?
Motion to adjourn.
Give a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned at. Nine fifty.